Kathy. Who's that guy? He's leaning over talking to, um, Bob with the jacket and the yellow tie. Looking away from us. We're here in a second. Oh, okay. He came up and introduced himself.
He's so nice.
Yeah, he seemed like a very pleasant guy. I was trying to figure out. Ready to go. Seven o'clock. Good evening. Welcome to the three hundred and eighty-ninth annual town meeting for the town of Situate. Thank you for coming. According being present, I'm calling the meeting to order. First, who stand for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I've been advised by the clerk that the warrant has been properly served. I would entertain a motion to dispense with the formal reading of the warrant. Have a motion. The second, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed, we waive the reading. Uh, I have nominated Kathleen Gardner to serve as deputy moderator for this meeting and would entertain a motion to ratify that appointment. They have a motion. Second, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, no. At this point, I'd like to recognize Peter Toppin, who has retired from being deputy moderator. We don't know exactly how many years Peter had done this, but it's probably well over forty that he had served as the deputy moderator. So let's have a hand for Peter and appreciate his attendance here. The following, uh, following, uh, tellers have been sworn by the town clerk, Anne Breen, Richard Harding, Jen Adams, Andrea Gillis, Linda Plowman, Kathy McGowan, Chris Marachi, Carolyn Stones, Penny Scott Pipes, and Allison Short. I was going to recognize our dignitary, yes, our state representative and our state senator are both here, Senator O'Connor and Representative Kearney. Thank you for being here. Next move, and I will ask Elaine, Elaine Russo, Elise Russo, to, uh, introduce the members of the advisory board.
Good evening, everyone. I'm this year's advisory board chair, and I'd like to introduce the members of the board. We have Connor Doherty, Jerry Kelly, former, former chair, Missy Seidel, Linda Ferguson, and Mark DeCosimo here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'd ask Nicole Brandolini to introduce the members of the school committee and the administration.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We have our vice chair, Peter Gates, Dr. Carrie Barkowski, Ms. Maria Fenwick, and Ms. Janice Limbom. We also have our superintendent of schools, Bill Burkhead, and our director of business and finance, Tom Rab.
Thank you. I'd ask Andrew Goodrich, chair of the select board, to introduce his board and the administration.
All right, I'll go right down the line. Our finance director, Nancy Holt, town administrator, Jim Bedrow. Then we have our vice chair, Susan Harrison, our clerk, Jamie Gilmore, and members Karen Canfield and Karen Conley. We also have of council, Brian Bertram and Ethan Dively.
Thank you. Also tonight, we by bylaw require the recommendation on the capital planning committee on the capital plan. I'd ask Chris Koshia to introduce the members of the capital planning committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm Chris Koshia. I'm the chair of the capital planning committee. The members are Richard Taft, Mike Gibson, Ollie Fur, and Maria Fenwick is our representative from the school committee.
Thank you. The planning board, the planning board also has to make a recommendation by statute on any zoning bylaws. Ask for...
Good evening. My name is Patricia Lambert. I'd like to introduce my board. Rebecca Lewis is my vice chair. And alphabetically, we have Mara Burke, Ian Burbine, Matt Labadilla, and Steve Pritchard. Thank you.
And finally, we have the community preservation committee, which also by statute will make a recommendation to the meeting tonight. Mr. Fenley.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Dan Fenley. I'm the chair of the committee, and I would also like to thank the other members of the committee, vice chair Skylar Chick, and the members Suzanne Brennan, Ann Burbine, Jill Cafrey, Mike Connor, Penny Scott Pipes, Meg Stillman, and Jack Whitaker. And I'd also like a special mention to our administrator, Andrea Gillis, who's in the back of the room there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fenley. Couple of announcements. Everyone's encouraged to participate in Ship Shape Day, cleaning up the town on May third. That's coming up. And then the town election will be on May thirty-first. At this point, we will recognize those who have been town employees who have passed since we last met, and they are Anthony Duganek, Situate Fire Department, Colin McCauley, Situate Police Department, James McCarthy, Public Safety Dispatcher, Robert Rapold, Situate Fire Department, Claire Kisker, Library, Richard William Taylor, Planning Board, Shirley Conley, School Bus Driver, Rita Rosen, Beautification Commission, and Mary Eleanor Westman, Situate Schools Cafeteria. Let's take a minute of silence to remember those who have passed. Thank you.
My name is James Toomey. I'm the town moderator. The moderator chairs the meeting, decides questions of order. I don't vote on articles, and I'd like to just take a couple of minutes to run through some of the process of how our meeting will work. The town has two branches of government, the executive branch, represented here by the selectmen and the school committee, and the legislative branch. And you are the citizen legislators in this town. The executive branch have made requests here today in their budgets and in the warrant. These requests take the form of the articles in the warrant, and the purpose of the meeting is to allow you, as citizen legislators, to review these requests and either approve, disapprove, or modify them. You're within your rights as legislators to ask the executive branch, question them, and act upon these requests as you see fit. This is your meeting. It's not a selectman or a school committee meeting. You do have one very important friend in this process, and that is the advisory board. The advisory committee is actually a board for the citizens here, and they review each and every warrant article in depth throughout the year. They meet almost weekly throughout the year, and they examine all of the budgets, all of the requests, and all the articles, and they do that in great depth, the time that most of us wouldn't have. So I'd ask that you pay close attention to their recommendations. They're not binding, but they're certainly worth listening to. Certain procedural rules apply here. We operate under a, the rules that are contained in a book called the Town Meeting Time, which is a parliamentary procedure outlined for town meetings used throughout the state. All non-voters must sit in the non-voter section in the left front features. Ordinarily, only registered voters may address the meeting. However, I can relax that in the event that we have some non-voters if there is no objection from the meeting. Persons wishing to address the meeting must rise, come to a microphone, and be recognized. This, when you are recognized, we ask that you give your name and address. This helps us keep track of the meeting minutes and also is respectful to your fellow meeting members to inform them who you are. If you represent a particular board, committee, or a private interest, we ask that you'd identify that as well. If you are a motion sponsor, first step is to make a motion. After making a motion, the sponsor has up to ten minutes for a presentation. Sponsors need not use a full allotment of time, and we're going to remind everybody that town meeting has always respected the proverb, brevity is the soul of wit. All motions have to be seconded. No motion is in order until it has a second. I'd ask persons to move to the center of the mic as much as possible. I attempt to keep track of the order in which people come to the mics, but that's not always easy to do. So, uh, that, but that's basically the way I try and order the speakers. You have to be recognized to speak. You can't speak from your seat or without being recognized. Other than sponsors, someone who was speaking on an article has five minutes in their first round of discussion on an article and three minutes on a second round. In order to speak a second time on the article, all other persons who wanted to speak have to be given that opportunity before someone can have a second, um, a second time to address the meeting. I ask that speakers can find their remarks to the motion that is in front of the meeting at the time, address those matters. Please don't engage in any personal attacks or any way attack the motives of members of the meeting. You may ask questions on articles through the moderator, and we'll do our best to get answers from the department heads, all of whom are here tonight, to answer questions if they come up. If someone has a question about the procedure, just call out for a point of order. I'll recognize you can come to the mic, and we'll make sure that everybody is on the same page in terms of the process that we're going to and what actions are proposed by the meeting. On voice votes, I listen to whether a motion passes or fails. For the most part, it's pretty evident whether they do or not. But if someone questions my call, they and seven voters can rise and will actually do a head count. So if there is any question on how I call a vote, don't hesitate with others to stand and rise, and we'll do another count. When we do a count, everyone has to be seated and the doors get closed. Our bylaws allow me to make the call on a two-thirds vote. Again, if I make that call and someone thinks that my call is wrong, that there isn't a two-thirds vote, or there is, again, seven voters can rise and we'll do a head count. We recognize the acoustics in this room can be tough. There's not a lot we can do about it. Our sound people do the best they can in making adjustments. If you're having difficulties, I know this is not a very satisfactory answer, but there are certain areas that are more dead than others. So you might try moving if you're having trouble, and let us know if you're having trouble hearing. We'll do our best to make sure that we can deal with the acoustic issues. There is a wireless microphone available if anyone should need the wireless mic. And with that, I'm going to ask chair of the select board, Andrew Goodrich, to, I think he has a presentation to make.
We actually have a few retirements and some that we definitely wanted to mention. But one in particular is actually our own moderator.
Thank you.
Mr. Toomey has been our moderator for six years, and before that, he had been town council since two thousand and seven. Now, we're in baseball season, and I have to watch a lot of baseball with my, with two of my boys that play. The umpire, I don't know what possesses anyone to be a baseball, a youth baseball umpire. There are all the parents are yelling, they're screaming, is that a ball? Is that a strike? It takes a very special person to do that. And you know what's amazing? Whether it's your youth basketball ref or baseball, it shows you how much you actually love that sport, how much you love baseball. If you're a moderator, it proves to me how much you actually love this town. There are times where this can get really heated up here, and I'm waiting for us to try to find Barabas to get out there because it is unbelievable how much, um, the calls that the moderator has to make. And day in and day out, every one of these meetings, he's going to do his best, like he always has for years and years. And that dedication has been unbelievable for us to see up close. Never mind the fact you have to try to, you had to try to plan a meeting during a pandemic where who knew what the rules and what we had to do and everything. So, Mr. Toomey, I want to thank you for your years and years of dedication and for being an exemplary umpire for us as we go forward. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all. Thank you. Thank you. Come on, let's move the meeting along, huh? Let's go.
I, I'm going to call up now our state representative and state senator for another presentation.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you all for being here. I'm Representative Patrick Kearney. I'm joined here with Senator Patrick O'Connor. This evening, we wanted to recognize two of our select board members that are retiring. We wanted to thank them for their dedication and service, Karen Conley and Karen Canfield. These are two women that I have known and come to know very well in working with the town. And Karen Conley, I really appreciate your dedication, your wit, your compassion, and your ability to call back in a timely manner and address the issues. I'm going to miss you. Karen Canfield, I've known you my whole life, and I could probably, we could probably be eating breakfast by the time I finish talking about the relationship and how much you mean to me as a person. When I first decided to run for public office, she was a big cheerleader, and I will never forget the support, the love, the dedication that she has shown me, the grace. She's been there for hugs, for laughs, for tears, and your impact on this town is going to live on for generations to come. So I, I love you, and I'm going to miss you, and we're going to keep working together. Okay, I'm going to turn it over before I cry to Pat O'Connor, who is going to give a few remarks, and then we're going to hand you guys some citations from the House and the Senate. Thank you for all of your work, and thank you for your service to Situate and the Commonwealth. Thanks.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Pat O'Connor, the state senator for Situate. First off, just want to thank everybody for being here and being able to display the ability to do, in my opinion, one of the truest forms of democracy in town meeting. And thank you to all of the school committee, the advisory board, the planning board, the conservation commission, community preservation, all of the committees that make up this town. It really is an unbelievably run town, and it's because of people like you who volunteer your time and talents to be able to do this. And to Karen Conley and Karen Canfield, it's been a, it's been a true honor to be able to get to know you over these years. Both of these members of the select board served during the COVID pandemic, and at that point in time, government got really chaotic as far as the responsibilities that were placed on local government at that point in time. And if you look at since that point in time, Karen Canfield, starting in two thousand seventeen, and Karen Conley in two thousand and nineteen, the list of accomplishments that have happened in this community are vast. From every single space you look at, from community preservation to protecting our environment, to building new infrastructure, to supporting our libraries, all of these things don't just organically happen. They happen because of meetings like this and because of people like you, and they've really gone above and beyond in being able to represent this community. And we are losing two people who have really put their fingerprints in such a positive way all across the town of Situate, and I couldn't be more grateful to call you my friend and to have worked with you these past few years. And one of the things that we're able to do up in the State House, every Monday and Thursday, we meet in the Senate, and Monday and Wednesday, the House meets, and right after the pledge of allegiance, we can submit names of individuals who we believe are going above and beyond in the community. And so earlier this week, we had both of your names right into the record, and once they read into the record, they give us these nice certificates and citations to present to them. And so Karen Canfield and Karen Conley, if you could come up here, please. And so these citations both read that the Massachusetts Senate and House of Representatives extends its congratulations to Karen Canfield and Karen Conley in recognition of your outstanding leadership as members of the Situate Select Board and for unwavering commitment to public service in the community of Situate, and that we in the Massachusetts Senate wish you nothing but the best wishes of continued success, which I'm sure there'll be many, and that we just want to say it's people like you that turn towns into communities. Thank you.
Both K two, let me back up. Karen Canfield was on the board in two thousand and seventeen. When my colleague joined Karen Conley, we had a little problem because it was like, which Karen? We said, oh, we'll do Karen C. And then it's like, no, there's two Karen Cs. So as much to her distress, we came up with K one and K two. And I got to be K one because I was here first, but I just tell you that story because it's been an honor to serve with K two. Come here. Neither of us wanted this attention, but you gave a politician a microphone. So I will just say on behalf of both of us, thank you. It has been our honor to serve, and we are going to miss working with the great folks at the state level, but more importantly, we're going to miss working with the staff and all of the volunteers who really, truly, as the senator said, they are the folks that, you know, make us look good and get everything done. So I'm going to get a little kapluke there, so thank you.
And I'm just going to say, no more Karen confusion.
Thank you. All right, we will now move on to the warrant for the special town meeting. Once again, we're going to use the consent agenda process, and under that process, items that are routine, kind of bookkeeping sort of items are grouped together and with the idea that they can be voted as a unit as opposed to going through each item individually and taking up the time that that takes. But if someone wants to discuss an item or has questions on an item, we want to make sure they have that opportunity. So what I will do is I'll go through and I'll read the items. If someone wants to remove an item from the consent agenda, simply say hold when I get to that item. We'll pull that out from the consent agenda. Once that's done, the items that have not been held will all be voted as one unit. So we'll go through. On the consent agenda, we have one, unpaid prior year bills. Two, budget reconciliations. Three, Community Preservation Act. Four, transfer of investment income earned on ARPA funds to the water treatment plant. Transfer, five, transfer of middle school MSBA reimbursement funds to the new Cushing Hatherley School. Six is to rescind borrowing authorizations. And seven is to provide additional foreshore protection funds, including FEMA projects. Did I hear a hold on number seven? Foreshore? Okay, number seven is held. Other than that, I would ask a motion on the remainder of the consent agenda, which is articles one through six.
I move that the town vote to take articles one, unpaid prior year bills, two, FY twenty-five budget reconciliations, three, Community Preservation Act, four, transfer additional investment income earned on ARPA funds to water treatment plant, five, transfer middle school MSBA reimbursement funds to new Cushing Hatherley School, six, rescission of borrowing authorizations out of order, and they may be passed by consent in accordance to the motion shown on the consent agenda distributed this evening.
Have a motion. We have a second. Motion is seconded. We have a recommendation from the advisory committee. This would be on articles one through six.
The advisory committee voted unanimously to recommend approval of items one through six. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? This requires a unanimous vote. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, no. I declare it a unanimous vote. We will move now to article seven. We have a motion on article seven.
I move that the town authorize five million dollars for the design, engineering, repair, reconstruction, or maintaining existing foreshore protection in the town, and for the purpose of meeting such appropriation to authorize the treasurer with the approval of the select board to borrow said sum in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter forty-four, subsection seven and eight, or any other enabling authority for the purposes as indicated in the printed warrant, and further that the select board are authorized to apply for grants, gifts, or donations for the purposes of this vote from federal, state, or private sources. And the said select board are hereby authorized to accept such grants, gifts, or donations on behalf of the town, and that the amount of the authorized borrowing shall be reduced by the amount of grants, gifts, and donations received prior to any such borrowing.
Have the motion. May have a second. Motion has been seconded. We have a recommendation from advisory committee.
The advisory committee recommended unanimously that this be approved. It is simply an authorization to the town to borrow funds. It enables us to offer a grant guarantee, and most grants require some skin in the game on behalf, from the towns who are requesting the grant for future requests, and can also be used for emergency repairs if needed.
Do we have discussion? Gentlemen on my left.
Scott Greenbaum, Forty Damon Road. First question is, five million dollars is not really a significant amount of money for foreshore work, but is there real, is there a plan in place how this money's going to be used, or is it just there to match some imaginary grant at this point? Are there certain areas that need repair immediately that we're looking at? And I have a second question. At some point, has anybody considered a betterment, um, article to pay for this foreshore protection because obviously the ten percent of the town that is most in the way and will be most damaged by this has some of the highest values in this town as far as property values, and they have the most to lose? And I think there's some fairness that needs to be started as a conversation of how we're going to do the half a billion dollars worth of foreshore work in the future that we need. And let's forget the ten-year-old study that is completely outdated and now, and the pricing is completely worthless. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bedrow is going to respond to the speaker.
So the five million dollar authorization is basically our safety net. We do have multiple projects that we are in the process of permitting right now. Third Cliff, the town shares two point five million. We have minor projects. These are all in the permitting stage. If they are permitted and the town gives us, or the state gives us money, we have this money for our match. and the town gives us, or the state gives us money, we have this money for our match. It's also used, the town is in the habit of making sure we have authorization to borrow in case there's an issue with one of our seawalls. Last year at town meeting, if you recall, there was an issue on the Cedar Point. We had the $2 million authorization. We used that to do those repairs now. So this is both an in case, an emergency, and there's also there, as was mentioned previously, if we have a match for a project that gets permitted, we can move ahead without losing that permit.
I think the second question was on, has the betterment been considered?
It has not been discussed, but I'm sure it's something the Board would be more than willing to discuss with you going forward. The issue really seems to be how far back from the seawall do you put people in the betterment? But it's something we can have a conversation about. We have not to this point.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on Article seven of the warrant for the special town meeting? If not, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor say aye. This requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, I declare it a two-thirds vote. That concludes the special town meeting, and we'll dissolve that meeting and move right into the annual town meeting, where once again, we will go through the consent agenda process. I will read each of the items that have been proposed for the consent agenda. If you want to have a separate conversation, discussion, questions on an individual item, say hold. We'll take that out, hold it as we did in the first round here, and then vote the remainder all at once. So I'll run through. This is Article one in the annual warrant, compensation of elected officials. Article two, reports of boards and committees. Article five, the Waterway Enterprise Fund Budget. Number six, Golf Course Enterprise Fund Budget. Seven, Wastewater Enterprise Fund Budget. Eight, Transfer Station Enterprise Budget. And nine, Water Enterprise Fund Budget. Article 10, Stabilization Fund Excess Levy Capacity. Did I hear a hold on 10? No? Someone sneezed? Okay. We're not going to hold Article 10 unless I hear anything. Okay. Article 11, Limits on Revolving Funds. Thirteen, Community Preservation Reconciliations. Fifteen, Chapter 91 Liability. Seventeen, Amending the General Bylaws to Add Revolving Funds. And number 20, Local Option Acceptance of the Mass. General Law's Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 22J, also known as the HERO Act. We have no items held. So we can have a motion on the consent agenda. Okay, that's right. I'm sorry. Yeah, no, which one? Which one was it? Stabilization Fund? Could you come to the microphone? Just let me know which one you want held.
Budget. Sorry, missed my chance on budget reconciliation, but fiscal year, operating budget, Article four. Even if I could just speak on the issue, I mean, I'm not going to change anybody's mind.
Well, we've got to take it article by article. So which article is it you want to speak to?
Four.
Four. We'll get to four later. That's not part of this. Okay. Nothing is held then. So we have a consent agenda on the items I mentioned. We have a motion from the Select Board.
I move that the town vote to take Articles one, Compensation of Elected Officials, Article two, Reports of Boards and Committees. And we go to five, Waterways Enterprise Fund Budget, six, Golf Course Enterprise Fund Budget, seven, Wastewater Enterprise Fund Budget, eight, Transfer Station Enterprise Budget, nine, Water Enterprise Fund Budget, 10, Stabilization Fund Excess Levy Capacity, 11, Revolving Fund Limits, 13, Community Preservation Reconciliations, 15, Mass. General Law, Chapter 91 Liability, then 17, amend General Bylaw Section 10260 Revolving Funds, and number 20, Local Option Acceptance, Mass. General Law, Chapter 59, Subsection 5, 22J, the HERO Act, out of order, and that they be passed by consent in accordance with the motions shown on the consent agenda distributed this evening.
Second. Second. Have a recommendation from the Advisory Committee.
The Advisory Committee unanimously recommended approval of all of these items that were mentioned.
Thank you. We'll move to a vote, as this is the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, no. I declare it a unanimous vote. We will move now to the unheld items. The first one of those is Article three, the Capital Improvement Plan. That's followed by Article four, which is the budget. So at this point, I would ask Chair of the Select Board if he'd like to give a brief overview of the budget process involving both the capital and the budget.
So budgets are all about priorities. The process itself starts with a set schedule all the way back in the summertime. But I think people need to realize something writ large about what's happening. Town of Hanson, $3 million shortfall, will have an override vote this year. Town of Hanover, $3.5 million override vote this year. Norwell, $4.1 million override vote this year. Town of Whitman, $2 million override. Ducksbury, $1.7 million override. Plymouth is looking to do an override just to pay for electricity costs. Hingham has approved staff cuts. Town of Cohasset, $900,000 budget cut deficit. East Bridgewater, $1.5 million budget gap. Town of Plimpton, $774,000 deficit. Town of Kingston, $653,000 needed, or they'll have to cut additional staff. Marshfield has a $710,000 budget gap. Everything we do starts with understanding that this is your money, and how important it is for us to have perspective on both short-term and long-term understanding of how we spend that money. It's been difficult for years and years, given inflationary costs, and you'll see some of these numbers, especially in capital and other ones, it boggles the mind. It boggles the mind. I don't have a full way for me to express how important it is for us to get this right, because these are going to become more and more difficult for us to make these decisions going forward, and how much this group cares about making sure that we're spending that money wisely. It's only with capital, it's only with working with the school committee, and it's only working with every other board committee and advisory to make sure that when we go through line by line, that we're spending that money wisely, making sure that we're not going to be one of these other towns going forward. It's going to be tough, but we're going to need your help to do it. And I just want you to know that we've looked through every single line item. We'll get to that later when we get to operating and other issues. But I ask for your patience and understanding as we go through both of these budgets. So thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a motion on the Capital Improvement Plan, Article three?
Good evening, everybody. I move that the town appropriate the sum of $13,356,323 for the purpose of funding the costs of the Capital Improvement Plan submitted in accordance with Section 6.6 of the Situate Town Charter, as printed in the warrant, and fund such appropriation transfer from the following funds. Transfer from the following available funds: free cash, $3,506,940.75. Maritime Center Rental Revolving Fund, $7,121. Water Enterprise Retained Earnings, $623,077.12. Sewer Enterprise Retained Earnings, $61,553.05. Sewer Capital Stabilization Fund, $272,238. Transfer Station Enterprise Retained Earnings, $60,375. Waterways Enterprise Retained Earnings, $44,286.03. Widows Walk Golf Enterprise Retained Earnings, $254,627. Premiums Reserved for Water Enterprise Debt, $47,933.88. Premiums Reserved for General Fund Debt, $1,843.25. New Bucket Truck Annual Town Meeting, April 2024, Article 3P, $182,500. Repower Unit One Annual Town Meeting, April 2021, Article 3BB, $4,220.92. Replace Truck Two Annual Town Meeting, April 2023, Article 3BB, $1,493.05. Landfill Gas Piping Annual Town Meeting, April 2017, Article 3DD, $175,000. Backhoe Special Town Meeting, October 2021, Article 5-5, $5,450. Loader Special Town Meeting, October 2021, Article 5-3, $7,751. Cedar Point Replacement Betterment Special Town Meeting, June 2020, Article 4, $402.69. Replace 5-1 Ranger Annual Town Meeting, April 2022, Article 3MM, $3,434.50. Replace Truck 5-4 Annual Town Meeting, April 2023, Article 3V, $210. Unpaid Bills Special Town Meeting, October 2023, Article 1, $916.25. And authorize the treasurer with the approval of the Select Board to borrow the sum of $8,095,000 in accordance with Mass. General Legislature, Chapter 44, subsections seven and eight, or any other enabling authority for the purpose as indicated in the printed warrant, and further that the Select Board are authorized to apply for grants, gifts, or donations for the purposes of this vote from federal, state, or private sources, and the said Select Board are hereby authorized to accept such grants, gifts, or donations on behalf of the town, and that the amount of the authorized borrowing shall be reduced by the amount of grants, gifts, and donations received prior to any such borrowing.
Take a deep breath now. We have a motion. We have a second. We have a second. Do we have a recommendation from Advisory?
The Advisory Committee voted unanimously to recommend approval of this while respectfully understanding the position of the Capitol Committee. We did vote unanimously in support of it.
Thank you. And we want a recommendation from the Capital Planning Committee.
Good evening, everyone. The 2026 Capital Plan represents about 13.4 million. You'll see in our report, we're slightly lower at 13.1. That's because the Jenkins windows came in higher. It was originally 900, now it's 1.2. This report was printed before that. Of that number, about 61% includes borrowing. So that's both at the general fund level and from specific enterprise funds. This plan, well, the Capital Planning Committee reviews all of the requests, and we meet with all the department heads, we meet with the town accountant, town administrator, and go through them. After that, we voted to recommend most of the plan, except for three items, which we held and did not recommend. These generally were held because we felt they were either unnecessary or should not be included in the Capital Plan because they are operating items. So if you're going, if you're looking through the article, the first item that we held is Item C. It's the DPW Engineering Vehicle for $40,000. The Committee voted one to four against recommending. This request was to provide all members of the engineering staff of the town with their own vehicle. They currently either need to share vehicles or in certain instances have to use their own personal vehicle to be able to perform some of their duties. But we are able to fully staff the engineering department, and there are vehicles available. The Committee felt that this was an unnecessary request, especially when we still have borrowing. The engineering department did not increase headcount this previous year, and they have been able to continue to perform all the services as required by that department. The second item is Item E in the article. That is the DPW Engineering MS4 Municipal Separate Stormwater System for $150,000. The Committee voted two to three against recommending this item. MS4 is a federal requirement where the town has to test for pollutants in our stormwater. This is the seventh or eighth year that we have had this on the Capital Plan. It was typically included there because it was a new item. We did not know what the cost would be, and, you know, we were saddled with it. However, at this point, it's been seven years. We're still seeing it on the Capital Plan. This is something that the town must do to comply with the federal law. Therefore, it should be included in the operating budget as it's an operating item. Finally, Item G in your article, the DPW Highway Replace Truck Number 107, 2006 International Dump Truck with a 2005 New 10-Wheel Dump Truck, $309,000. The Committee voted two to three against recommending this item. The Committee believes that a replacement for this vehicle is not warranted at this time. The truck at issue is still in good working order. In addition, there's a belief among certain members of the Capital Planning Committee that a truck of this size is not required to fulfill town needs. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Now, we have 32 items in the Capital Plan. I ask everybody to take a minute, and when we get to the discussion, if someone has questions, concerns about particular items, we'll see how that goes, rather than try to go through one by one and hold them. So at this point, we have your recommendations. Do we have discussion? No discussion.
I'm not sure where to take this.
Well, tell us your name and first.
Nicholas Daniels.
And you live where?
Maple Street. And I mean, if I may, I'm going to make this quick as possible, if you don't mind.
You've got to be speaking to an item in this article.
That would be the Police Budget Reconciliation.
The Police Budget's going to come up in the next article, the regular operating budget. Okay.
I apologize.
That's your chance at that point. Any further discussion? Okay, that's good. All those in favor, say aye.
Sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see you there. Yes.
Virginia Aires, Prospect Ave. I just had a question for the Advisory Committee. If the Capital Planning Committee is going and interviewing all the departments and making recommendations and didn't approve those three light items, why is the Advisory Committee approving them all?
Okay. I'll ask Ms. Rousseau to respond to that.
Well, we also listened to the department heads, and we listened to the DPW, and understood where they were coming from. We felt that, for instance, a truck from 2006 perhaps should be replaced. It may well be in working order now, but it may not be in a month. And in addition, the Select Board voted in favor of all of the projects that were put forward. Therefore, we voted for them.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Any questions? Okay. I'm going to call for a vote. This requires a two-thirds vote for borrowing. All those in favor, say aye. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, no. It's a unanimous vote. We move now to Article Four. Article Four is the Budget, and we will have a motion to start with.
I move that the town raise and appropriate ninety-nine million, seven hundred and eighty-three thousand, five hundred and seventy-seven dollars and ninety-six cents, and transfer from the Golf Enterprise Fund, eighty-nine thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars, from the Wastewater Enterprise Fund, three hundred and eighty-eight, thousand, six hundred and six dollars, from the Water Department Enterprise Fund, five hundred and seventy-three thousand, nine hundred and thirty-seven, from the Transfer Station Enterprise Fund, two hundred and forty, three hundred and forty, excuse me, two hundred and forty thousand, three hundred and forty-seven dollars, from the Waterways Enterprise Fund, two hundred and twenty-three thousand, three hundred and eighty-eight dollars, from Debt Premium Reserve, one thousand, three hundred and seventy-nine, from the PEG Access Cable Revolving Fund, two hundred and thirty-six thousand, six hundred and one dollar, from the Wind Turbine Revolving Fund, two hundred thousand dollars, from the Solar Array Revolving Fund, two hundred thousand dollars, from the Septic Loan Fund, twelve thousand, three hundred and forty-nine dollars, from the Opioid Settlement Fund, one hundred and eight thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars, from premiums reserved for the Public Safety Debt Exclusion, forty-six thousand, four hundred and seven dollars and fifty-one cents, from premiums reserved for Library Renovation Debt Exclusions, fourteen thousand, three hundred and eight and ninety-eight cents, from premiums reserved for Middle School Debt Exclusions, one hundred and forty-three thousand, four hundred and seventy-six dollars and fifty-five cents, and from the Massachusetts School Building Assistance Reserve, fifty-three thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars, totaling one hundred and two million, three hundred and sixteen thousand, one hundred and forty-eight dollars to the General Fund, for the purpose of funding personal services and expenses for town operations as may be necessary for the fiscal year commencing July first, twenty twenty-five.
Is there a second? Motion is seconded. Recommendation from the Advisory Fund, Committee.
The Advisory Committee, once again, voted unanimously to recommend approval of the budget. We just wanted to say this is a level services budget, which means that we will maintain the services that were provided in the past fiscal year. This is a very difficult thing to pull off in an environment with inflation rates that are double if not higher than our statutory limitation on what we can raise the taxes at two point five percent. A majority of our neighboring towns, as you've heard from Andrew, either are making, looking to make significant cuts, or they're requesting operational overrides, and that is not being asked of us in this fiscal year, neither of those things, nobody's getting laid off. For instance, we're not asking for an operational override. We wish to commend our strong and fiscally conservative management team for their efforts in bringing this together, and those are the reasons why we approved, recommended approval of the budget.
Okay, what I'm gonna do here is, we'll go through each department. I'll call out each department. If someone wants to hold a department for discussion, like the police department, this would be the chance to, to call out, hold as we get to that department. As we get to the end, those that have not been held, we'll vote all at once, and then we'll go back and discuss the ones that have been held. So here we go. Town Administration. Advisory Committee. Reserve Fund. Finance Director, Tine Accountant. Assessors. Treasurer Collector. Information Technology. Tax Foreclosures. Cable TV. Town Clerk. Planning, Community Development. Property and Liability Insurance. Police. Hold Police. Fire. Hold Fire. Combined Public Safety Dispatch. Shellfish. School Department. Regional School Assessments. Public Works. Facilities. Snow and Ice. Streetlights and Beacons. Board of Health. Council on Aging. Veterans Agent. Commission on Disabilities. FACS Substance Abuse Program. FACS. Someone hold FACS? Okay. FACS is held. Library. Recreation. Beautification. Historical Buildings. Debt and Interest. Plymouth County Retirement. Workers' Comp. Unemployment Insurance. Contributory Group Insurance. Federal Taxes. Okay, so we have a hold on number five sixty-one, FACS Substance Abuse Program, on the Police Department and the Fire Department. Other than that, I'd ask that we move forward on the remaining items which will, will not be discussed, will take a vote on all of the items in Article Four except those that I just mentioned. So we're gonna hold out Police, Fire. That's it. Okay, so, this requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, no. I declare it a unanimous vote. We move now to item number two-ten in Article Four, the Police Budget. Is there discussion on the Police Budget? Gentlemen at the center, mic.
Sorry, I apologize, I've never been here before, I've never, I was planning on coming here.
We'll help you all one, we're glad you're here.
Nicholas Daniels, one oh six Maple Street. I'm a criminal justice major at UMass Boston, and I am currently representing Young People's Alcoholics Anonymous. I'm sorry, we typically don't have representatives. Those who didn't hear, I'm representing multiple young people's groups of Alcoholics Anonymous, including the one that meets right now in Cituit Harbor, and the lovely recovery center that's down there. So again, in the interest of not taking up too much time, friends, neighbors, and representatives, I'm here somewhere that I thought I'd never be to plead with the public and hopefully educate a few people on an extremely serious issue that threatens everyone in this room, everyone's financial prosperity, in addition to many people's lives.
Excuse me, do you have a question on the numbers in the Budget?
I do.
Okay, because we, with all due respect, we, we have to stay with the article and the budget issues, okay?
It relates to opioid remediation and cruiser, and cruiser line in the Budget.
Good.
So, it's hard to get an exact figure. UMass Boston puts the total police budget of Cituit at thirty-nine point six million dollars per year. The majority was spent on new cars, weapons, military equipment, breakroom luxuries. This figure does not include state, federal, or special force budgets, nor does it include corrections, anything like that. Our tax is paid for two hundred and twenty-two billion dollars with a B in police last year, and corrections alone, and that does not include the majority of it. So essentially, this doesn't count courts, special corrections departments, which account for another fifty to a hundred billion, and again, depends which database you use. This figure has risen substantially, year over year over year, every single year in modern history. There, it has never gone down or stayed the same in, you know, thirty years or so. Every full-time Cituit resident has paid fourteen thousand dollars each, every household, just for police in a town with very little crime. So the crime rate, meaning the people that commit crimes, how many people per capita commit crimes, has stayed relatively the same for, you know, this whole period of modern history. The recidivism rate, however, meaning people that are involved with the system, people that were supposed to be rehabilitating, people that were supposed to be getting better, has risen substantially, year over year over year, every single year, and it all relates to the budget. And it's, this is a fact that's obvious to, again, like criminal justice majors and officials that are actually making money, and my professor and it, but the justice system is the reason for this crime. The justice system is the reason for this recidivism, without, without a doubt, and it's, we're paying more and more every single year for a counterproductive job. I once heard a prosecutor joke about, to an officer saying about this, saying they're in the best growth industry in the United States. I have things on private prisons, I won't even, we lock up five times as many of our citizens as the rest of the world combined, five times. Authoritarian regimes like Russia and China, not only do they spend a fourth of what we spend on these, on these issues, but they lock up half as many citizens as we do. These are murderous authoritarian regimes. And I, and I apologize, I know I'm irritating, but I, I have to say this, no one else is gonna say this for us. So terrorists kill thirty to fifty-one citizens every year, you know, the police kill a thousand to eighty-five hundred, and the reason that gap is so large is because of made-up causes of death like excited delirium that we are just now learning are murders that they could not come up. And I say, don't say that lightly, these are killings, these are United States citizens. And according to mapping police violence database, the most reliable database we have, the majority, meaning more than fifty percent of these killings were preventable if we train police correctly, stop with the weapons, stop with all this just ridiculousness. You know, I might not believe them, and you won't believe me either, but I am a Norwell High kid that has lived in Cituit for the last five or six years. I'm just like your children, I was an honor roll student, I had friends, I did fine, everything, and then, you know, I have a substance abuse disorder, I'm not a saint by any means, by any stretch of the imagination, I have mental health issues, I've worked on them all, and I've done an incredible amount of work, and I know how much work it takes for these kids to get better.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I, I think, what is it that you want people to do with the Budget?
I would like representatives to know what really happens. I, giving one dime of opioid remediation funds to the police is a slap in the face to every single person that has ever tried to get better, it just is, and that was the founders, when they sued Purdue, they said, do not give one penny of this to police to exacerbate the issue.
All right, hold on, hold on, all right. I'm afraid that this isn't something we can address under Article Five, unless you're looking for more money or less money.
Less money.
And you have a proposal, then otherwise, you know, I appreciate what your, your point is, but the point here is, what changes do we, do we make, what, what do we approve or not approve with respect to the Budget?
I mean, I have plenty of thoughts that I'm sure we don't have time for, especially on the FACS, in regards to FACS, but police, we need to stop raising this budget so substantially by millions every single year to, it's counterproductive, every single thing we do. Only measures do not work, treatment works. If you are a representative, please understand.
I think you've made that point. If, if there's nothing else you're suggesting we do with the Budget, I'm gonna ask you to leave the microphone.
I would, I would recommend that they slash it about twenty percent and invest it into treatment programs that actually help our population, and it costs eighty thousand dollars per inmate, per year, Massachusetts, to lock up someone. If you are a state representative, please keep this in mind.
You made your point, please leave the microphone.
Thank you, sir.
Gentlemen over on my right, on the Police Budget.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Gordon Price, forty-eight Menlot Road. Before I address the Budget of the Police Department, I'd like, I have a couple of statements I'd like to make. I think it's important to people here in the audience to understand about our Police Department. Recently, Denise and I and eighteen other people completed a Cituit Community Police Academy program. It ended last week, and I think we were all amazed at the amount of work that the police in our town do in all different areas. There, we were shown many, many different, different areas that they're operating in, and everyone was done with a lot of detail. We have a department that is, I'm sure, probably number one in Massachusetts. We have a chief who devotes umpteen hours to his job, as do the officers, with professionalism, commitment to their job, and attention to detail. There's no stones left unturned when it comes to police work. It was an eye-opener for Denise and I to participate, and I hope that if the program is offered again in the future, and I think the chief plans to do that, that you take advantage of signing up, you'll be amazed at what happens in a daily shift in the Police Department. We actually had an opportunity to spend two hours in patrol on a cruiser. We only stopped six people, two burglaries and a couple of assaults, but that, that was a, a, a slow, a slow evening, apparently. I say that in jest, but every officer that we came in contact with is an incredible, incredible individual. Most of them are, live in this community, most of them have children in the school system, and they, they pay many, many hours of, of service to this community that really goes unknown, and I just want to say in terms of the Budget, every penny that we spend for our Police Department is money well-served, and whatever they need, we should step forward and, and make that happen for them, because it's, it's a service that is especially needed in this, in this day and age, and we all, we all benefit by it, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the Police Budget? Ma'am, the middle, uh, microphone.
My name's Margaret Roy, and I live at forty-seven Wheeler Park Drive. I've had a lot of help from the police officers, they're the ones that always show up, and I really appreciate them, and there's a lot of places in the world that there's no number to call, and it's no one coming, and the police and the fire have been there for me so many times, I can't even tell you, so as far as I'm concerned, whatever they need, they've got it. It's just my opinion.
Thank you. All right, we'll have a vote on the, we have a motion which included the five million, four hundred, ninety-seven dollars and six hundred and four for the Police Department Budget. No further, being no further discussion, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. That's a unanimous vote. Next, we move to Fire. Fire was held, is there discussion on Fire? Yes, sir?
Ed Katuriski, fourteen Aberdeen Drive. I notice a six hundred.
Please speak into the mics, so we can hear.
I notice a six hundred and sixty-two thousand dollar increase, and just ask what that's for.
Mr. Boudreau.
Most of that is covering the cost of the new contract. When we did our contract with the Fire Department, we used ten comparable towns to match what a paramedic gets paid. Our paramedics were ten out of ten on those comps. Having a paramedic in the back of the ambulance is literally the difference for some people living and dying and going to the hospital, so in order to make sure that we can attract and keep those paramedics, the contract does contain significant increases for paramedics.
Is there further discussion on the Fire? Sir?
Jack Zarikoskis, fifty-one Colonel Mansfield Drive. Similar question on the purchase of services in Fire. First, I want to say I appreciate all the work that's been done on the Budget as far as trying to keep expenses under control, but it is in the Fire Department that we see the largest percentage increases in expenses. Personal Services, I understand it's because of contract requirements and apparently some inequity amongst the paramedics, but again, we're talking about at least a ten percent increase. So a question I have on that part, on the Personal Services, is that contract for any period of time, can we be looking at more increases for Personal Services beyond that? Is it a one-year contract, a three-year contract? The second one on purchase of services, although the dollars are smaller, we're still talking about a twenty percent increase or even more, thirty percent. Why does that have to go up in such a large amount percentage-wise? Thank you.
Mr. Boudreau.
The purchase of service, as you said, is mostly for repair and maintenance agreements, particularly for the rescue on stretches, monitors, the Lucas machines, things like that, that they use. Those go up every year, they're generally bid on an annual basis, but they do go up annually. We have new stretches in our ambulances that can win automatically, so the guys don't have to pick them up. Those are all in the, uh, different maintenance agreements, all the machines are on the maintenance agreements, and those are going up substantially, so that's what those increases are.
Thank you. Lady at the center, mic.
My name's Margaret Roy.
My name is Margaret Roy, forty-seven Wheeler Park Drive. EMT saved my grandson's life twice, so I think they deserve it.
Any further discussion on the fire budget? So we will have a vote on that, and that number for the fire budget, which has already been moved by the Board of Selectmen and seconded and recommended, is six million seven hundred fifty-two thousand five dollars. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. That's a unanimous vote. Now, it's been pointed out to me that when I read the number for the police department, I read the first column, which was last year's number, I should have read the middle column, so we'll do that vote again. The number for the police budget, which has been moved, seconded and recommended, is five million five hundred fifty-one thousand nine hundred thirty dollars. All in favor of that number, say aye. Opposed, no. It's a unanimous vote. Last item we have held is the FACS Substance Abuse Program. Any discussion on that item, number five sixty-one on the budget? Seeing no one at the mics, we will move to a vote on that. Again, it's been moved in the original motion, seconded and recommended. And that number for fiscal year two thousand twenty-six is one hundred eight thousand six hundred and seventy thousand dollars. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, no. It's a unanimous vote. Okay, we move now to Article twelve, which is community preservation. Do we have a motion for community preservation? Ms. Quanley.
Good evening, everyone. I move that the town hear and act on recommendations from the Community Preservation Committee, the CPC, on the fiscal year two thousand twenty-six community preservation budget and pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-four B, the Act, to appropriate and/or reserve sums of money as indicated below. One, to meet the administrative expenses and all other necessary and proper expenses of the CPC for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-six. Two, for the acquisition, creation, preservation of open space. Three, for the acquisition, creation, preservation, rehabilitation, and restoration of land for recreational use. Four, for the acquisition, creation, acquisition, preservation, and support of community housing. Appropriations for the items below are to be expended first from any existing reserves for the purposes of such item, then appropriated from community preservation FY two thousand twenty-six estimated revenues, with any excess to be appropriated from the community preservation unreserved funds unless otherwise specified below. All such sums appropriated are further to be expended subject to all the terms and conditions of the applications regarding such projects filed with the CPC and the votes of the CPC regarding the approval of such items. One, two hundred eighty-nine thousand seven hundred and fifteen dollars from the community preservation FY twenty-six estimated revenues to be reserved for the creation and support of community housing consistent with the Act. Two, two hundred eighty-nine thousand seven hundred and fifteen dollars from community preservation FY two thousand twenty-six estimated revenues to be reserved for the acquisition and preservation of historic resources consistent with the Act. Three, two hundred eighty-nine thousand seven hundred and fifteen dollars from community preservation two thousand twenty-six estimated revenues to be reserved for acquisition and preservation of open space consistent with the Act. Four, seventy-two thousand four hundred and twenty-nine dollars from community preservation FY two thousand twenty-six estimated revenues for the administrative expense of the community preservation committee. Five, two hundred fifty-one thousand eight hundred dollars from community preservation FY two thousand twenty-six estimated revenues for payment of debt relevant to the athletic field renovation project voted as Article twelve, Annual Town Meeting, oh four, two thousand nineteen. Six, a hundred thousand dollars for recreation, design of basketball pickleball courts. Seven, seven hundred fifty thousand for community housing, Phase Two, supported access to independent living, also known as the sale project. Eight, four hundred eighty thousand for historic resources, the Bates House rehabilitation, and nine for recreation, Cedar Point Flag Pole requirement, replacement.
Thank you. Do we have a recommendation from advisory? Ms. Seidel.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. As you've heard, there are nine items proposed by CPC tonight. The first five are administrative in nature. In addition, there are two recreation, one housing, and one historical resource project. A few points we'd like to highlight. With regard to the basketball courts, we recognize and thank the Situate Basketball Association for their fundraising efforts these past years to maintain the courts, and we see the need now for full renovation for this highly-used space. We were pleased to see the project proposal is inclusive of a way to address the public's interest in more pickleball courts. These are temporary and portable and gives flexibility as to their use. We appreciated the approach is methodical, in today's request, is to fund the design and engineering portion. If this is approved, the next steps will include outreach to the public on the design, and that at a future meeting, after design is agreed upon by all parties and the bidding process is complete, SBA will be able to present a more accurate request for estimation for construction funding. With regards to the request for the additional funding for the sale project, the Advisory Board understood the increase in costs related to inflation and to the unanticipated renovation needs. We recognized their continued effort to raise money through the grant application and fundraising process, and were particularly impressed by the volunteering by community members to assist in the project. We understood one member of the community is donating their time and materials to paint the building. Finally, we continue to believe this is an important project for the town and one that has the potential to be a model for neighboring communities. With regard to the historical resource project, the Advisory Board agrees on the importance of protecting historical structures in our town. We are in agreement with the approach to engage an architect familiar with historical building restoration for the Bates House, as was done with the Situate Lighthouse. We understand the concerning structural issues that need to be immediately addressed and are appreciative of the multiple grant application efforts underway to offset these costs. The Advisory Board found all nine requests to be in compliance with the tenants of the Act and within the ability of the funds, and recommends approval of the article with unanimous vote eight to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
The Select Board voted unanimously in favor of this article and with great appreciation to the Community Preservation Committee for the diligent work that they do. They vet all of the applications, and it is a time-consuming process, but necessary, and we appreciate it.
Thank you. I'm going to ask Mr. Fenelly to stay on deck on this, we might need you for some explanations. At the moment, is there discussion on the Community Preservation Article twelve, the motion on Article twelve? There being no discussion, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor, say aye. It's a unanimous vote. We move now to Article fourteen, which is the sale lease of a portion of the Old Gates Intermediate School property. Select person, Kentfield.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town transfer to the Select Board for the purpose of selling or leasing, and authorize the Select Board to sell and or lease for a term not to exceed a hundred years. On such terms and conditions, as it deems in the best interest of the town, a portion of the Old Gates Intermediate School property, as shown on the accessors map, thirty-eight dash twelve dash zero, located at three twenty-seven dash three-three-three First Parish Road, for the purposes of creating housing units and to authorize the Select Board to perform all actions necessary to carry out the purposes of this article.
Is there a second? Motion is seconded. And, why don't, Cameron, why don't you go first and explain that the sponsor of the article will have ten minutes to explain the article.
Okay. Thank you again, Mr. Moderator. In preparing my remarks for this article, I asked a bunch of people in town what they thought of Article fourteen, and I was surprised because, you know, we've been talking about this for a long time, but I got a reaction of, "This seems awful sudden," or, "Where did this come from?" So I thought before we get into what Article fourteen is going to ask you, I'd give you a little bit of the background. A number of you have lived and breathed this, but I would ask for your indulgence for just a moment. The Old Gates property is zoned as a residential, for residential purposes. Under the zoning, it can only be used for residential or municipal purposes. In two thousand sixteen, the master facilities, I'm sorry, I said that wrong, public facilities' master plan was created for all municipal buildings, and knowing that the Gates building was going to be vacated upon completion of the new middle school, it was recommended that the entire building be repurposed as a town hall, a senior center council on aging, and a school department complex, and barring that, that the building be sold. Two years later, after advocates for the senior center rejected this plan, instead advocating for a standalone building, the Adaptive Reuse Committee recommended either using the building just as a town office and putting the senior center in the back, or demolishing the entire building and using the site for recreation. In two thousand eighteen, it was decided to build a senior center where it stands today and to refurbish the gym and part of the A Wing for recreation. Since then, the Select Board, over the years, has been debating what to do with the, what is, we call building B, which is the main section of the Gates building. A few years ago, the food pantry entered into a lease, and they moved into the cafeteria section, but otherwise, that building has been vacant all this time. So since fiscal two thousand eighteen until today, the town of Situate has spent over one million dollars in the upkeep, utilities, insurance, what it keeps, literally keeping the lights on in the building, and in addition, we've spent over a hundred thousand dollars on capital things so that it doesn't fall apart. Many options have been debated, proposed, and explored over this time, and it comes down to this. Given that there are many municipal, recreational, and historic uses on this campus and the zoning restrictions that are in place, selling outright this one section of to a developer is really not a feasible option. Second option is, we could tear down the B Wing and create additional parking and recreation space, and eight years ago, just to do that, the cost was estimated at three million dollars. So I didn't do the math, but it's more now. Third option is to renovate the B Wing for municipal offices, as was proposed almost ten years ago, and in two thousand eighteen, it was estimated those costs would be twenty-three million dollars. So if we were to say, "Let's do that," and it would be about ten years before we would even put a shovel in the ground, and we're estimating that it would be in excess of fifty million to renovate the existing structure. That funding would most likely come as a debt override question to town meeting to pay for it. And the final option was to find an appropriate partner that would develop, work with us to develop and contribute significantly to the redevelopment cost of the site, and that way reduce the cost to our taxpayers. Since selling to a private developer is not likely, and the Board feels very strongly that the cost to taxpayers to invest fifty, sixty million dollars in the Old Gates on top of the Hathling-Cushing School override, the water treatment plant override, the public safety complex override, and the middle school override, and the future investments that we're going to need to make, as we talked a little bit before, coastal resiliency and expanding the sewer, all things on the horizon, in the Board's view, makes reuse of this facility just far too expensive. So that leaves either tearing the building down for a municipal use or finding a partner. Okay, that's the history. So to explore the feasibility of the partner, which is the path that we wanted to see, the Board began discussing the uses on the site and what was in line with what our community needs. Our town master plan, which I'm sure you all read, is clearly highlights that we need community, and there's a community priority in finding affordable housing options for both our seniors, who would like to downsize and stay in the community, and for our young kids who want to start their first home here. In two thousand twenty-four, the town received a grant that was used to hire a consultant to study the feasibility of putting housing either in the Old Gates or where the building currently stands. The study informed this Board that housing was definitely possible on the site. Knowing that housing is feasible and that grants are available for affordable housing development, the Board put out an RFP, a Request for Proposal, seeking proposals for partnership for the redevelopment of the B Wing, and to see if any qualified organization would even be interested. We had no idea if anyone, there would be takers. The developers that developed our beautiful Lawson Green, which is the new affordable senior housing project behind Central Park and currently has a waiting list, submitted a proposal and indicated they thought that it was feasible to develop senior housing on that site. So this is where you come in tonight. Through all the efforts that I just outlined, the town has determined that housing is feasible on the site of the Old Gates. We have determined that we have a partner who is willing to work with us to try to develop that housing. Now we are asking you, town meeting, if you want to move forward with making that site available for housing. Article fourteen is not asking you to approve the proposal that was brought in. Should the developer become our partner, then proposals for the project would go through the lengthy process of meeting with the planning board, Affordable Housing Trust, Zoning Board of Appeals, and all the other hoops that you need to do before you can build anything in town. All of those are public meetings, and all of those will have, everyone will have an opportunity to provide their comments and their concerns. Issues around access, parking, traffic, where do we put the food pantry, would all be discussed during that process. And finally, should the town need to have a funding component to work with our, whatever partner agreement we came to, we'd come back here to town meeting to ask for the approval for that funding. So we are really at the start of a conversation. What Article fourteen is asking is, will town meeting give the Select Board the authority to enter into a lease or sale of the site for the purpose of housing? And the Board, for the purpose of housing, the Board does not want to invest any more time and money on the housing option without the expressed approval of this body. So voting in favor will be beginning of the hard work to make sure that housing development works for the Old Gates campus. Last, I'll say, what happens if it fails? If it fails, we will continue to pay for the upkeep of an empty building, or mostly empty building, as I said, it's very expensive. If we reject housing as a use of the site, and you do not allow the Select Board to begin negotiating for that use, the remaining options will be a proposal to tear down the structure for recreation or other municipal use, or to consider a proposal to invest tens of millions of dollars in repurposing the building. The Select Board, after all this consideration, voted five-one in favor of this article.
Thank you. We have a recommendation from the Advisory Committee. Mr. Kelly. Mr. Kelly.
Well, I don't have any questions, do you? Karen, you did a great job laying it out. So as FDR said, any presentation should be sincere, brief, be sincere, be brief, and be seated. The Advisory Committee, over the years, has considered making the Gates School a school, or as Jim Bedrow would like, a $50 million town office. Jim, I think you're going to be stuck in the brutalist building that you currently reside, or for housing. And the Advisory Committee unanimously voted in favor of transferring the Old Gates School from the school committee to the Select Board.
Thank you. We now have discussion. Lady on my left was at the mic first.
Yes, my name is Donna Picarello. I live in 7 Manhill Road. I just have one question, and I appreciate the, your concise description of how we got to where we are. Is this starting out tonight with a provision that all these units, whatever they might be, are all affordable housing, or is that something to be discussed later?
Mr. Vudrow.
Both. The proposal from the potential developer would be all affordable, but that would be part of the discussions as we go forward.
So you're not limiting, you may put this up for sale or lease with a provision that could go either way, all affordable, or maybe a certain percentage later on?
I think the intention of the board is for them to be all affordable. However, if the proposal was to retain the building and put some of the units in the old building, then the cost goes up significantly and will make it more difficult to have them all affordable, if that makes sense. But our plan right now is to have them all affordable, yes.
Okay, but that's not, that's not, that's not a firm limit.
The only thing that's firm right now is whether or not the town wants to make this available for housing. That is the threshold question. Everything else then becomes part of the ongoing process as we move forward.
And if we say to make it available for housing, does that negate all other options if we don't like the percentage of affordable housing versus not affordable?
As Mrs. Cantfield said, we will have to come back for other approvals at town meeting, yes. Then we'll have to go to the planning board, the zoning board of appeals, and just about everybody else in town.
Okay, thank you.
Lady at the center, Mike.
Thank you. Teresa Bowen, 43 Tangelwood. Thank you, Karen One. I have two questions. Will there be any grants from the state for this, if it's going to be low-income housing? That's number one. And number two, what percentage of housing in Situate do we have to do to comply with the state for low-income housing? Thank you.
Great questions. I'm sorry, I actually forgot the first one. I'll answer the second question. The first question, the second question about how many do we need? We have five, 455 units right now, which is 6%. We need about 300 more affordable units in the, in town in order to meet the threshold to avoid 40B. However, if we do create a new housing with affordable component, it affords us a two-year safe harbor from the regulations. Planning board's nodding that I got that right.
Thank you. Gentlemen on my left.
Hi, Matthew Gollert, 5 Blanchard Farm Lane.
That's my favorite question. Yes, so one of the reasons that this is, it's being considered is there are grants available for affordable housing, and it's one of the opportunities that would help bring these costs down.
Thank you. Again.
Matthew Gollert, 5 Blanchard Farm Lane. Just want to, I have one question, I have a couple of questions. First question is, is the sale, if a sale were to go through, is the land that the recreational field's on, is that part of the sale?
Again, that's, will be part of the discussions ongoing going forward. What we have is a proposal, but it is not a final plan that the town has accepted. What is shown right now would impact those fields. It's not clear going forward whether it would impact those fields. So again, this is very early in the process. The question is, does the town want to go forward with housing there or not, so the board can make a decision how to proceed with that building?
And I guess the second question is, I heard someone mention earlier when they were reading the article, that they're not recommending that we sell the land? And why is the option to sell or lease in the article if people?
It's a standard language, would be difficult to sell just because of the way the building sits on the property, but it is an option in the language when you do an article like this. But given where it is, it'd have to have frontage, and it's going to be difficult, but it is still an option that we put in there.
Okay, thank you.
Lady at the center, Mike.
Andrea Hunt, 66 Manlot Road. My understanding, and I may be wrong, was that if this does go to lease to the people who were interested in it with Lawson Green or whoever, my understanding was that to create enough of the housing units that you're talking about, it would require taking down that Section B area of the school. Is that to be understood, or is that something that would come up to a separate vote?
Again, Mrs. Hunt, that'd be both. The proposal would be to take the building down and build a brand-new building with 63, 63 units. That is their proposal, that still needs to be vetted going forward. They've looked at the old building with the new energy codes that the state has, it is their impression, and I think we look at it when we talk about making it a town hall, that would be prohibitively, prohibitively expensive to make that existing building into housing and still meet the energy codes that the state has just updated. Again, that's still part of the discussion.
I understand, but you did make a comment that if they continued to use the old building, that those units would have to be much more expensive?
Correct.
And so it would not be affordable housing? Is that a possibility?
What I said is, they would be much more expensive, and then either the town would have to provide a subsidy that would be larger, or the discussion would be whether or not you could have them all affordable and still have the project be affordable to build. The more expensive it costs for the units, the harder it is to keep them all affordable.
My other question is, the Historic Preservation or the Historic Society, Historic Commission has been trying to make that area into a historic area. And that discussion came up when we were talking about building the senior center, and there were rules and regulations to make that into a historic area, and of course, we've got the Lawson Tower across the street, and the Unitarian Church, and Dreamworld, and the beautiful Central, the park area that we have. So I would like to, I guess my question is, being an old person in this town, this school means an awful lot to an awful lot of people, and it is one of our few historic buildings that we still have standing. I have seen many of these buildings in town after town after town be restored, some in much better condition than our Gates School, some in worse condition than our Gates School. But I think that that opportunity needs to come back to the vote of the people to make the decision whether or not they really want that school to be torn down. And to turn this over to the Select Board for a 100-year lease, so that somebody can come in and lease it and then tear it down, I just don't think it's fair to the community without having the citizens be able to say whether or not they actually want this historic building removed. We have already sullied the area, in a sense, because the senior center should not have been built that close by the rules of a historic area. However, that could be overlooked and done, and that school could still be a historic building in this town that is taken care of, and even if it was $50 million to do it, I know that's an awful lot of money, but the town has voted for other things in the town that have cost far more than that, and there just might be enough people who value our historic area that want to be able to keep that building. And I have to say that I think that rather than just putting it all in one vote to go to a board of selectmen to make that decision without it coming back to a vote in the town, I don't think that that is fair. So I'm hoping that some type of concession can come together where we can all have a voice. Situate's a beautiful old town. We have a lot of old buildings, and tearing them down and building new buildings that don't have even the same amount of life in them, they don't, new buildings don't last for 100 or 150 years anymore without having to be all redone. This building is an old building, and yes, it needs to be redone. I would like to see that happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Gentleman on my right.
Gordon Price, 48 Manlot Road. Having spent many hours, many months, many years researching what could happen at the Gates property, and finally, five years ago, having a senior center go into construction was an amazing thing to happen and is an amazing building and opportunity for all the people in Situate, not just senior people. We know that we have a significant need for additional housing in Situate. Someone told me that there are close to 300 people waiting on the housing list in Situate to find a unit. And I am comfortable with the initial stages of this program, working with a developer that has shown that he can do something that is beneficial to Situate, beneficial to the citizens who live in Situate. There will be umpteen opportunities, I'm sure, for meeting after meeting after meeting to discuss this over the next year or two before a shovel is even put in the ground. So you don't have to worry about something being done in the next week or two or three. It's going to take a long time to think about this, to plan for it, and for the community to have input. It always amazed me when we were building, actually building, senior center was under construction, and I would run into people, and they would say, how did this happen so quickly? Well, over 20 years it took to get that building. So people just need to pay attention to what's going on, go to meetings, find out what's going on, and voice your concerns, as Mrs. Hunt just did, valid concerns. And there are a lot of concerns that will be brought up. But I strongly urge the meeting tonight to move forward with this article and vote it so that we can move forward and finally get something done at that Gates property.
Thank you. Gentlemen in the center.
Yes, Wayne Ross, 42 Chittenden Road. Prior to 2018, we had discussions with the Old Gates School, and what was going to happen with it. I spoke at the town meeting when I was in the Performing Arts Center, and all along, I've been very much in favor of tearing the building down. And as I explained then, the ramp on the front of the building is not the specification, and we have to come off altogether. The elevator shaft inside, we have to replace altogether because it's not the specification. The floors will have to be ripped up because the ramps are not the specification. It's going to cost five times more to retrofit the building than to just build a new one. I find it a little irritating now that we're going to entertain to rip the building down when we couldn't do that to put the senior center there in previous time. I realize things have historical significance. I feel this building has very little. I'm all for tearing it down, but personally, we're all for tearing it down and making it just into a parking lot for the senior center. We never have enough parking, and had we have put the senior center where the building B is now, we probably have had enough parking. I realize the vote tonight is to only go forward, whether it be housing or not housing, but I really feel it would be best suited as an open green space, mostly as a parking lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Gentleman on my left.
Darren Campbell, 57 Acorn Street. I apologize, this may be a bit of a naive question, but if I understood or heard the figures correctly, it sounded like in 2018, the guess was about $23 million to renovate for municipal purposes, and maybe perhaps that could be as much as $50 million today. I just want to know, is there any, has there been any talk or discussion ever on, could this be done incrementally? Could we gradually improve parts or systems of the building and phase in more municipal use over time versus having a $50, $50 million price tag up front and the debt service that goes along with that? Just to know if there was a chance to do this on a longer period of time with phases.
Yeah, the answer to that would probably be no. The floors have asbestos, they all have to come up, all the piping has asbestos, that it all have to be replaced, the wiring is 50 to 100 years old, that all has to be replaced, the windows have PCBs, and the caulking, those all have to come out. So once you're into that, that's where you're spending all your money. There's multiple grade changes in the building that would have to be addressed. As the previous gentleman just spoke, the elevator is not big enough, that would have to be all brand-new and put in new. So to do it incrementally, you wouldn't be able to meet code and actually get an occupancy permit to move in.
Even for municipal use, that's right, is that correct?
Yeah, even for municipal use, we still have to meet the code, especially the handicap codes and all those things. Once you start working on it, you're going to meet code.
That's fine. I didn't know if there were differences in the codes for residential versus municipal, so.
Yeah, no, it'd have to meet the code, yeah.
Okay. Gentleman on my right.
Patrick Kearney, 8 Morton Road. I move the question.
Okay, we have a motion to move the question. That is a motion to cut off debate. It requires a two-thirds vote, there is no debate. So we'll take a vote on the vote, take a vote on the motion to move the question to cut off debate and bring this to a vote. All those in favor of ending discussion, moving the question, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. No. I don't think that is a two-thirds vote. Maybe a majority, but it's not two-thirds, so we'll continue with the discussion. Gentleman in the middle.
Hi there, Mike Travis, 47 Summer Street, and I commend you for taking this on, and I am all support, I'm in all of support of affordable housing. My question is, does the committee or do the town have a minimum threshold where they would be satisfied with percentage of affordable housing, and whether that is the minimum of 20 to 25% for 40B, or if there is a higher threshold?
Our goal was 100%, and since he's a rental and also senior-oriented, that was the ultimate goal, to get to 100%. And again, even when we talk about the funding, we're talking years of this process to go forward, but that was the goal and the intent.
Wonderful, thank you.
Gentleman on my left.
Eric McCarthy, 27 Crowe Street. I wanted to ask a clarifying question. My daughters go to the rec department, is that, is that not on the table for tonight, whether that building would come down? No.
Under this plan, no. That build, the gym and that other side is totally separate from that side.
Regardless of tonight.
We're talking the middle, the middle section.
Okay. My second question or comment is, I moved here in 2021. I keep coming to these meetings, voting on things that have been outstanding for close to a decade. The fact that this was a question in 2018 and it's 2025, it's unacceptable to me. I will vote for this tonight, but we have to do better, we have to move faster, and it's, I'm sick of coming to these meetings and voting for things that have been outstanding for almost a decade. So please, figure out a plan for this, and let's move forward with this fast. Thank you.
Gentleman in the middle.
Jackson Koscus, 51 Colonel Mansfield Drive. First point, in the presentation, we were told that it's cost us about $1 million since 2018 to maintain the building. Just want to mention that that's a large number, but it's also $150,000 a year, which I think Mr. Bedrow has also referred to in the past. The maintenance for the existing building is $150,000 per year. The maintenance for the existing building is $150,000 per year. So the million dollars sounds scary, but what's scary to me is looking at how much it's costing us to maintain versus how much it would cost us to go ahead with this project when we don't even know what the cost is. Second point, there's already been an RFP requested, of which we received one response to my knowledge. That response included some reference to the numbers that would cost for us to go ahead with building the housing. We haven't talked about that at all. All we're talking about on this article is to transfer this building, the gates, to the board of, to the select board. Question I ask is that the select board has been able to work on this all this time without the transfer of the property to the select board. And we're being told tonight that we need to vote on this or else the select board doesn't feel they will go forward with the consideration to make this happen. I'm recommending that we vote no until we finally decide what it is the select board intends to do. I think the select board can continue to go after this proposal to build affordable housing or low-income housing or whatever specific housing we're talking about. But in the article, we don't even say what housing we're talking about. You notice, all we see is the word "housing." There isn't anything saying what the select board should be pursuing. And there is a difference in low income. There is a difference in affordable housing. There is a difference in senior housing. And yet, once again, we're being asked to vote in an article that doesn't specify that at all. I have several other points here, but I know there's other people that want to speak to it. I am recommending that we vote no until we have more information, more detail. I also recommend that select board continue to pursue this regardless of the vote on this article. The select board does not need us to say we're transferring the property for them to be able to pursue this any further, which has already been demonstrated by their putting out a request for proposal. Done.
Gentlemen in the center.
Mike Gibson, 142 Old Forge Road. I am a member of the Capitol Planning Committee, but we were not involved in any of these conversations as my, in my own capacity. The gentleman who just spoke made a great point. It's the point I was going to make. You're hearing a lot tonight about intentions. This is what we think we might do. This is what we're planning on doing. This is what we thought about doing. This is your last vote. I just want to put that out there for everyone. If you have concerns or you don't like what you've seen, or you're not quite sure because you haven't gotten an answer, this is it, right? We're voting to transfer this over to the select board where they have the authority to sell or lease it. They don't have to come back to us for another vote unless they need money. Yes, there will be a planning board meeting. There may be a zoning board of appeals meeting. You can have your input there. They don't have to listen to you. You will not vote again. Just something to consider when you look at this article. Thank you.
Mr. Fennity.
Dan Fenley, 65 Forest Lane. The town is losing historic resources and will continue to lose historic resources. I think that's a fact. I, my question is, does this proposal preclude or prohibit this facility's facade from being preserved along with the housing being built behind it? I think that might be a way to at least somehow preserve the historic nature of the facility and address things like the gentleman behind me not being able to navigate the building.
So two things, let's say about that. One is the level itself. The facade and the current plan is supposed to make it look almost exactly like the actual building. The goal of this, of what you're talking about, what folks are saying is, what we're trying to do is ask you after, actually, it's actually 2014, not 2000. Here's one plan, here's another 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 presentation. We need your help and direction exactly where you want us to go. After all of these plans and asking everybody, we couldn't give the building away because just to touch it, you're looking at $3 million because of the asbestos and everything else. If it's going to, and so we went through all these other different plans and everyone asked us, because we're trying to solve a problem, what's that albatross of $100,000 going to do? What's it going to look like? We're trying to keep the exact facade and how it looks. I don't see, I'm telling you right now, given the new stretch code and everything else, unless you're willing to spend 50, 60, 70, 80 million to keep that on the inside exactly the same, and I don't know if there's the appetite or even the willingness for folks to understand how much that's going to impact the taxpayer. So we need your direction for us to go forward. But that exact outline is going to be, under that current plan, it's going to look the same.
Lady in the center.
That's you.
Susannah Green, 337 First Parish Road. I, I go to meetings and I do follow a lot of what goes on in town. I went to years of meetings for the planning of the senior center. So the original plan was to tear down Old Gates, which has been mentioned. So the senior center was in a central location with a lot of parking around it, better access to get in and out. However, you know, due to the historical nature of the property and opposition from the town, a very strong opposition, after years of planning and decisions being made, the plan was made to move and rotate the building and put it in a corner of the property that was not the original intention. So here we go again, where we've got another, you know, housing, now we're looking at housing. You know, I've been following the meetings and I just saw the initial presentation myself three weeks ago for what was being proposed here. It seems like there's a lot of things that are not yet into being held into account, such as the traffic impact. This is a very bad area of town for a traffic. We've also, sorry, we've also got costs that are not factored into the proposal. I believe it was approximately $5 million coming from the town. That does not include demolition. That does not include the field. That does not include hooking up the recreation buildings for heat. You know, we've got, I think I said the field, but that would also take the field out of commission for a year. It removes the baseball and softball corner. And there's a lot of things on the site from looking at the plan with the parking that they proposed where I don't see the elevation differences being held into account, along with a lot of other things for cross connectivity and pedestrian walkways and so on and so forth. So I feel that it's premature to vote on this today. I don't think anyone's against housing, but we need to consider all the costs and all the factors and all the impacts on this site, which already has a lot of things going on with recreations, senior center, and all the other uses. Not to mention the food pantry. We don't have a plan for the food pantry, and they just expanded their hours. So what I would like to do at this point in time is I would move to indefinitely postpone action on this article until we have a better grasp on what that plan would be.
I have a motion to indefinitely postpone. Is there a second? That's a second? Motion to indefinitely postpone essentially takes us off the agenda for the, for the night. It's neither an approval nor disapproval of the merits of the project. It simply says, we're not going to talk, we're not going to do any more with this tonight. It is debatable. So at this point, we can hear debate on the motion to postpone, which also can go to the merits. So I'm going to ask if people are at the mic and they want to continue to speak to the motion to indefinitely postpone, you're going to have to wait in line, Jamie, then if you're staying there, we're including the motion to indefinitely postpone now on the discussion. Lady on my right.
I would oppose this motion. I am in favor of voting for this. We have been talking about this for more than 11 years. Situate is a wonderful community. In the 51 years that we have lived here, it has really stood the test of time because we have been forward-looking without being foolish. And I think that to say that we can't, that the board of selectmen won't listen to us has been disproven time and time again. We elect the board of selectmen, we know where they live. We can make our voices known to them. We have done things in this town carefully, and I think by and large very well. Housing is needed. It's going to make Situate a better community in the future. And I think that there's a fear factor to doing anything, and that's why so much takes so long. So I would be in favor of voting for this tonight and voting against this amendment.
Thank you. Lady in the center.
Anne Burbine, 10 Penny Chris Road. I could not agree with Mary Lou Butler more. We should not postpone this. It has been going on far, far too long. What the selectmen want to do, we will all have input in it. This is not going to be done, people, in a vacuum. And the thing is, they are voted in, and as Mary Lou said, we know where you live, and we can vote you out. But the thing is, we have to make a decision. Because no decision is in fact a decision. This, as I have said, this has gone on far, far too long. We cannot please everyone. Doesn't work that way. But for heaven's sakes, vote this down right now, please.
Okay. Gentlemen on my left.
Matthew Gollert, 5 Village Farm Lane. I actually had a question before the motion was put on that's related to the current motion. Why did we only put an RFP out for housing and not an RFP out for all possible uses of the land?
So in the plethora of other documents that we looked at for other municipal uses and other things, years before we looked at that, when you do the RFP, you have to do a specific, and that was what was left, was now, after going through XYZ, you know, the folks in town hall didn't want a new town hall, so why would we put that forward? So that, we had to go with what, what was left after going through all the options.
Mr. Gilmore, I think you're up next.
I've been watching this conversation tonight, and I am just impressed with the passion experienced in this room. Everybody here wants to do what's right for this town. I think housing makes sense. It does, because we need it, because we have 300, over 300 people waiting to get into our housing already, which is kind of tragic, quite frankly. But I'm hearing people that are jumping all the way to the end of the construction project. This is a five-year endeavor from when we are given the authority to even commence in official capacity to entertain these offers that we have solicited. So the board does need some power and your endorsement to go forward. Does it mean we're going to tear the whole thing down and make it look like Monticello? No. We want to maintain the historic intent of the structures. Does it mean we're going to end up with the bids that we have today? No. Does it mean we're going to have to get into dealing with the traffic issue? I love that intersection, that you nearly take your hands in your life every time you drive there, right in front of the park. It's been there all my life that I've been here. So please, don't let one over-focused or micro-focused issue hold your passion up to get involved with the planning phase that has to happen, and give us your vote. And don't let this motion to delay go any further because we'll just revisit it again. So let's roll our sleeves up, get together, work together, and move forward. Thank you.
Lady on my right.
Jean Rankin, 45 Marshall Ave. I concur, but I'm really tired. I've been coming to these town meetings, as someone said, and seeing things stay forever. And I also voted for athletic fields that were a hell of a lot more expensive than this. I mean, just on the revolving budgets on page 37, the senior center food service is $45,000, and the athletic fields are $75,000. Our seniors deserve better. Situate's a gorgeous town. This is, I'm really mixed emotions because I think housing is needed, but I'm also somebody that goes to the senior center and needs a valet to park because I can't get into our beautiful senior center, which is, you know, one of the best in the country. If you haven't been there, check it out. People there are marvelous. So it's with mixed emotions. I think we do need to go forward with this. I do have a question. Are there any other locations in Situate that are being considered for senior housing other than this site?
At the present time, the town has no other properties that we have for affordable housing.
Thank you.
Gentlemen on my right.
Mr. Moderator, Ed Ketersky, 14 Aberdeen Drive. I move to call the question.
Okay, we have a second. Okay. This will move the question on the motion to, to postpone. All those in favor, requires a two-thirds vote, all those in favor in cutting off discussion on the motion to postpone, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. Doesn't pass by two-thirds, the debate continues. Gentlemen in the middle.
Point of order.
Yes.
I'm not sure that you understood, and I certainly didn't. We were voting to cease debate on the question. Is that not correct?
The question before the meeting right now is the motion to postpone.
Right. That's not how I interpreted that.
No, that's, the issue is, do we stop debate and vote on the motion to postpone?
Would you say it again, please?
The, as I understood it, on the motion to call the question, the motion on the floor was the motion to postpone. Therefore, the debate that would be cut off would be the debate on that motion, not on the main motion having to do with authorizing the sale. We're here where we are, we're losing time. Go ahead, please.
Mr. Moderator, John Whitaker, 594 Country Way.
I think many people here tonight look at this article and they see a lack of specifics. What are we actually going to do? It's not clear. This is an extremely sensitive part of the center of our town. The senior center is there. As we know, there are days when seniors come to the senior center and give up and go home because there's already not enough parking. What is going to be the impact on parking? This is an extremely sensitive and important historic part of the town. Many historic properties are there. Not just the Old Gate School. What is the impact? What is this building going to look like? None of this is brought before us tonight. And so what we're proposing with this article to indefinitely postpone is to do just that. To come back to this in a couple of town meetings, hopefully with a more specific plan from a specific developer or person with an idea. So we can really know what's this going to look like when it's done? What's the impact going to be on senior housing? What's the impact on how those important historic properties? Do we actually want to do this? Or as someone has proposed, why, maybe we should tear it down, put in green space and more parking. I think for sure this is going to have a devastating impact on the athletic use of this property. So take our time. Come up with a specific plan that we can look at and think about and debate. There's no need to just rush ahead because there really isn't any specific plan that we're voting on. So let's just wait. Thank you.
Thank you. Gentlemen on the left.
Mr. Moderator, Peter Chirod from number four Gannett Road. I've been getting a little bit frustrated here, but I didn't want to steal anybody's thunder. So I've been observing what's going on, a little bit about myself. I have over 30 years of municipal experience, retired about 20 years ago. And what I'm seeing is not unusual, but it can be fixed. And I've been part of getting things fixed, and that is algorithms. We need some algorithms. When we do something, it doesn't do it just by itself. It also acts on other projects, other things within town. For instance, we want to do something with a certain building. We do that. People move in. They have more kids. We have more more schoolchildren. We have more costs. So those are the types of things that I think we really need to look at. Is develop some algorithms in each department about the, what the impact of what we does, what we do, excuse me, on other people is, are. Sustainability is the other thing that I think is extremely important in today's world because the prices of goods and services are probably not going to go down. And I'm not talking about politics right now. So I think that's something that would be very beneficial to the town in in planning the town meetings, in planning the budgets, and in planning capital improvement. So thank you for giving me the opportunity to give you some of my questionable yeah, algorithms.
Thank you. Gentlemen in the middle.
Yes, Wayne Ross, 42 Jettenden Road. Just to clarify and clear something up, could we call a vote for the issue on the floor now as to whether to postpone or to vote tonight? I think a lot of people were confused at the last vote where we're going, so we just call a question that we decide now if we're going to postpone or not vote. Postpone or vote.
Thank you, and I'll clarify that. The motion here now is to postpone. If a majority of the meeting votes to postpone, the question is gone. It ends the question for tonight. There can be no vote on the main motion. If the meeting votes not to postpone, then the next step would be to go for a vote on the main motion. Hopefully that's clear. No one else being at the mic, no further discussion. The vote now requires a majority. Is all those in favor of the motion to postpone, say aye. Those opposed, say no. Okay, does not achieve a majority, the motion to postpone fails. That brings us back to the main motion, which is motion to allow the sale of the property for housing. This requires a two thirds vote. Mr. Doherty, do you have, are you?
Just a brief comment. Connor Doherty, 603 Country Way. Just so everyone knows, I feel like Karen Canfield touched upon this, but I just want to highlight it. Developers can get around zoning requirements in town because we don't have enough affordable units to hit the threshold that prevents them from doing so. We need more affordable housing. Even if we made this entirely affordable housing, we still wouldn't hit that threshold. But what it would do is show a good faith effort by the town, which puts a two year pause or moratorium on developers' avail- ability to go around our zoning laws and build large structures that seem out of place. I think that's an important part of this. I think it's important that we move ahead after more than a decade with deciding that we do need more affordable housing, that there's great upside to this, and we should vote on it tonight.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the main motion? There being none, I'll call for a vote. Again, it's a two thirds vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Those opposed, no. Could ask for standing vote. All those in favor, please stand. Okay, all those opposed, please sit, all those, take your seats, and all those opposed, please stand. Oh, I think it's pretty clear. It's passed by two thirds. If seven people doubt that. If seven people doubt that, we can have a count. Good. Okay, we're going to move along. Next article is Article 16. That was 14, right? Yeah. Article 16. Have a motion from the Board of Selectmen.
I move that the town amend the zoning bylaws as set forth in the printed warrant as further amended by the handout provided at the back of the gymnasium and on record with the town clerk.
A second?
I believe the Planning Board has a presentation to make.
Okay. Well, the Planning Board.
Good evening. I'm Rebecca Lewis. I'm going to present the Planning Board report to town meeting. Article 16, amended zoning bylaw, multiple sections for accessory dwelling units-ADUs. The Planning Board hereby reports that in accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter 40A, a public hearing was held on this article on January 9, 2025, and continued on January 23, 2025, February 13, 2025, and February 27, 2025, when the hearing was closed. On March 13, 2025, the board voted unanimously to support passage of the article at the April 14, 2025 annual town meeting. The changes in this article allow for the town of Situate to become compliant with the Affordable Homes Act and is implementing regulations. The act was signed into law on August 6, 2024, and the regulations became effective February 2, 2025. Changes include adding definitions for the state definitions of accessory dwelling units, ADUs, protected use, ADUs.
I'm just going to interrupt. Is anyone having difficulty hearing? The volume is a little low, I think. Yeah, you can move a little closer to the mic.
Gross floor area.
Much better.
Principal slash primary dwelling, accessory dwelling unit, large cooking slash kitchen facility. Alterations, short term rentals and structure. Replacement of Sections 530-1 and 530-2 and 530-3 of the existing bylaw with new section 530-1, 530-1A, 530-2, and 530-3, stating the purpose of the bylaw, the applicability of the bylaw, site plan review, and special permit conditions as applicable for ADUs, and adding a portion in site plan review for accessory dwelling units. These sections all seek to comply with the state law and its regulations and keep additional elements of the existing bylaw in place, which have been allowed in Situate and work for the town in regulating ADUs. The town desires to be compliant with the state law and preserve a provision for a large ADU as previously allowed. The Planning Board support supports this article.
Thank you. We have the recommendation. You want to continue, Mrs. Slavitt? Go ahead.
Good evening, and sorry to keep you here so late. For the third year in a row, we are here with a very consequential zoning bylaw. So a little background history. First of all, I want to thank you all for coming and staying. Town meeting is still the purest form of democracy that we see in this country. I appreciate everybody being here. The governor signed the Affordable Homes Act into law on August 6 of 2024. The law went into effect statewide February 2 of 2025. The law allows accessory dwelling units, further referred to as ADUs, by right in single family zoning districts with reasonable restrictions on parking, size of the ADU, and allows for prohibition of short term rentals in ADUs, and does not require owner occupancy of either of the apartments or houses. Site plan is allowed under a local option. And since August, the Planning Board has been working to integrate the new law, and it is a law set down by the governor, to work those into requirements of our very well deserved and well working, good working ADU bylaw that we already have. The Planning Board is an elected board. We are not appointed. And being so means that we respond to you, our constituents. In review of this bylaw until a zoning workshop in December, four public hearings in January and February, we accepted comments from departments in the public, and we are working closely with town council. As such, we are responding to our constituents with accessory dwelling units. So I think something to know is that when you go to permit something in zoning, I see it as one great big street, and planning takes one part of it. You may have to go to conservation, you may have to go to hold on, we have the Board of Health, Sewer, Water, Conservation, Zoning, and the building. This bylaw right now is about zoning only. The goal of the law is to provide permanent housing to address the state's housing shortage. The Affordable Homes Act is about producing ADUs as a means of permanent housing that the governor feels can be constructed less expensively than a single family home. Now, we know this remains to be seen, but the town needs to integrate a bylaw to comply with the Commonwealth Law and protect the character of Situate and its residents. This bylaw is about providing some regulation of these ADUs. If the bylaw does not pass, there will not be any regulation of ADUs that you, our residents, have come to expect. The bylaw protects all residents of the town, including applicants and abutters, so they know what to expect and know what the rules are. The concept of regulating protected uses has been around for decades. The Planning Board is not looking to stop ADUs, but we are looking to address some issues that these ADUs may create and review them through site plan review. This bylaw will preserve the character of the town and provide long term housing as required by the state. This bylaw is not about economic gain. Thank you. We're going to give you an overview of what the new bylaw is.
The key points of the Affordable Homes Act and the Situate's new ADU bylaws are as follows. ADUs are allowed by right without owner occupancy if the dwelling is less than 50% of the gross floor area of the principal dwelling and no larger than 900 square feet, whichever is smaller. Owner occupancy is not required for either the ADU or the principal dwelling. No parking requirement is required for ADUs located within a half a mile of a train station, ferry terminal, or bus station. Short term rentals, that is, less than 31 days, are prohibited for ADUs. ADUs can be attached to the primary dwelling. They can be within or detached. Detached ADUs must meet the same setback requirements as the primary dwelling. A site plan review will be required for all ADU applicants. The Planning Board also chose to keep a section of the, our existing bylaws for ADUs above businesses and also larger ADUs, not by right, which are greater than 900 square feet, but no more than 40% of the principal dwelling floor areas. This, these sections of the bylaw will remain in effect, but will require a special permit. Again, the purpose of this law was to provide permanent housing and address the state's housing crisis. For Situate, adopting the bylaw is essential for complying with the state law and ensuring appropriate oversight of ADU development. It is important to note that this bylaw does not address short term rentals, and that will be discussed at a later time. Thank you.
Okay, time for a recommendation from the Advisory Committee. Mrs. Doherty.
Spoke to a lot of folks in town about this one and heard all different arguments on all different sides, which I appreciate. The Advisory Committee looked at this from the viewpoint of it's kind of an extraordinary legislative moment that the governor would say, I'm passing a law to override any municipal town locality laws that are in place because there's literally a housing crisis. Massachusetts, we've all heard like Boston's super expensive, but as a state, as a whole, we're currently the third most expensive place to rent a single family home. Those kind of costs are only going to continue to make it prohibitive for teachers, public safety specialists, starting their careers to be able to actually live in the town where they work, to actually be a part of the community that they serve. I see that as not really in the interest of our community. As a whole, we found the ban on the ADUs to make a lot of sense for a lot of reasons. It still makes it a moneymaker for homeowners. You can still rent it out. I heard some concerns about like, what if our in-laws come to stay for a few days or a friend? I said, well, unless you're charging them rent, that's not an issue. We voted in favor of it. It seemed to be in line with the spirit of the law that was passed by the governor. And we think the Planning Board did a great job of going through all the details and making sure it did exactly that.
Thank you. Ms. Clonely for the Select Board of Selectmen.
Thank you. The Select Board voted five to zero in favor of this article. And I would like to point out that we greatly appreciate the work of the Planning Board, the professional staff, the legal people we have had working on this. This is a bylaw that if we don't accept it, we're going to have to accept the state bylaw, which has far fewer restrictions on it than the the bylaw that we're proposing. I was here, I don't know, 12, 15 years ago, when there was a very spirited discussion about accessory dwellings, especially as it related to the smaller neighborhoods in Shore Acres, for example. I think that the Planning Board is trying its best to implement the law that the governor is proposing. And I think we all understand the issue of the housing crisis. But on the other hand, we do want to be able to preserve the character of our neighborhoods. And I, for one, don't want to see a crane. for one don't want to see a crane pulling up in the house next to me and putting down a boxcar with no oversight by anyone. So, I think it's important, and as for the short-term rentals, I think that this board, our board, also agreed that that is not a problem. There's plenty of short-term rentals available in Situate. What there isn't is enough permanent housing for people who want to stay here. So, thank you.
Thank you. Let's hear a discussion from the floor. I just, a question is, are they proposing any kind of restrictions on like a non-conforming lot, or like a common driveway lots or anything like that? That would not be held up under this, uh, proposal?
No, we're not. Most everything is non-conforming anyway. We just do not want to increase the non-conformity. You cannot increase the non-conformity of your lot, so there is no restriction on that, right?
If you have like a non-conforming lot, that you didn't have the frontage, but you do have land to do it, or you're already on a-
You need to meet all of our current zoning bylaws and our setbacks. That we are not taking away.
But even if you have the setbacks and everything, but your, your house is built, you have plenty of land on a non-conforming lot, you don't have the hundred and something feet, or you're already on a common driveway, you know, where they have three houses on a common driveway?
No.
Brian?
If you have a non-conforming lot, you have to get a Section 6 finding from the zoning Board of Appeals, just to certify that what you're doing doesn't make the lot more non-conforming. So in your case, if it's a frontage issue, but you have plenty of land with setback and things like that, you would most likely get a Section 6 finding because you're not increasing the non-conformity of the lot. Does that make sense?
And what about like, uh, common driveways and stuff like that?
It's going to be on a case-by-case basis, free slot. What's the non-conformity, and what's going to be up with that particular ADU?
When those lots wouldn't be non, they'd be conforming, but they're already on, on common driveways, like, uh, Situate has a thing, you can only have three houses on a common driveway.
Karen Joseph, Town Planner. You can still have an ADU if you have a house on a common driveway. It's an accessory use to the principal dwelling, so you would not be restricted from having just be, an ADU just because you live on a common driveway.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. Lady in the center.
Good evening, and thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mary Ann Lewis, 18 Lighthouse Road. I offer an amendment, Mr. Moderator, to this article, Amendment Number One, which moves to amend Article 16 by striking Sections 530.3 subsection E, 530.2 subsection L, and 770.2 subsection C in their entirety.
Have a motion to amend the main motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a second. Maybe you could start by explaining what the removal of those sections does.
Those three sections address the site plan review that is proposed for the Planning Department to have over ADUs. We have heard a lot this evening about the need for housing, not only in the town of Situate, but the entire state. There is a shortage of all types of housing stock across the state. We have heard from, in our constructive discussion regarding the Gates proposal, about moving faster, eliminating obstacles, eliminating cumbersome regulation that slows down the process of where we all want to get to, which is to increase the number of affordable housing units in the town. And when I say affordable, I don't mean something that's necessarily linked to the median income index. I mean seniors that want to age in place, that want to use their single-family homes and perhaps develop a 900-square-foot granny flat, as they are sometimes called. Young adults who want to stay in the community and raise their families and stay next to family. And the state recognized this by passing the Affordable Homes Act in August of 2024, which prompted the Planning Department to undergo a series of review of our ADU laws in this town. And although I applaud their effort, and I recognize the hard work that they undertook, and it was a lot to unpack, and there were lots of moving balls, and I attended all four of the public comment periods that the Planning Board held. And with all due respect, in light of all that work, I think they overshot the mark. And for that reason, I am suggesting that this amendment, and I urge the town meeting to adopt this amendment. We have oversight with our very capable building department. We have oversight with our capable zoning board for those non-compliant variances that may be needed. The, these proposed site plan review regulations are onerous, they are costly, they are burdensome, they are overwhelming, because in the proposed language, it allows the Planning Department to consider and require things like ma- making you put up expensive face, uh, fencing, shading, landscaping, hardscaping, but before you even get there, you pay a fee to the building department, you then pay an, a fee for, to upgrade your water lines, your sewer lines. The sewer fee for an ADU, a 900-square-foot by right, according to the state, was raised six months ago to equal that of a single-family home. That could be 3,900 square feet. It was doubled from 8,000 to 16,000. Now, as an attorney, I read the state statute to indicate that we cannot impose any requirements or regulations on ADUs that we don't impose on single-family homes. Attorneys disagree. But irrespective of whether or not I'm right, or another attorney's right and has a different opinion, let's talk about the fairness aspect of this. I don't think it's fair for us as a community to create a scenario where we're bringing a tank to a knife fight. Let people who have residential, single-family homes make a decision whether they want to have their children, young adults, get into an affordable situation, keep families close together, and allow seniors to age in the community that they've invested in for many, many years. As far as what I think someone would end up building that might not be aesthetically pleasing, that homeowner's going to be the one that either lives in the ADU, I mean, it's not required, but more likely than not, they're either going to live in the primary residence or the ADU, they're going to live closer than anybody else. They're certainly going to want to build something that they would want to live next to. So I urge town meeting to vote yes on this amendment. Thank you.
Okay. Response from the Planning Board?
I would like to make a rebuttal to that, Ms. Lewis. It comes directly from the governor's office that this is about permanent housing. It is not about short-term rentals. Therefore, I urge you not to allow short-term rentals, which is anything the governor describes it as, less than 31 days.
I'm going to vote, Mr. Moderator. The amendments on site-
This is not, this, this amendment refers to the, uh, site plan review.
And site plan, oh, sorry, excuse me. And site plan review is a local option, as are short-term rentals, given to us by the governors. In all of the meetings that you were in, and I know you were there because I was there as well, it was, it was the consensus that people wanted to have site plan review because they want to know what's going on next door to them. And I can tell you that without site plan review, somebody could just pull up right next door to your house, and you have no idea, since we no longer put building permits in the paper, we don't, we don't know who posts permits or anything. And to think that we're going to give this to our zoning and our building department, that is an onerous task for a, a department that has two people and two- So please, what you would want next door to you. If we like to say it's zoning, you can't tell me what to do with my property, but I can tell you what I do not want next door to me.
Thank you. Gentlemen, to my right, speaking to this point? As I said at the beginning of the meeting, we allow non-residents to vote unless the meeting opposes that. Am I hearing opposition to a non-resident speaking?
Yeah, I would object to that. This relates to this community, people who live in this community. We don't need a developer or somebody from the outside coming in to talk about it.
I'm neither of those, if you'd like to hear-
It doesn't, it doesn't matter. You're not a resident.
Sir, sir.
You're not a resident.
Sir, stay still. Yes, sir. All right. We're going to have a quick poll of the meeting. Those in favor of letting a non-resident speak, say aye. Those opposed, no. Sorry, sir, you're, you're not allowed to speak. Gentlemen in the middle.
Steven Shepard, 70 Situate Avenue. Over the years, as we've made zoning changes in this town, uh, when they come before us, it seems like the impact is going to be limited or small, and then all of a sudden, uh, the gates are open and, and there's more and more development. And I think changing this, the, the rules that the town has, has had hearings on and developed to try to put some kind of controls on this is, is a smart move, and moving now to eliminate those protections would be a big mistake.
Thank you. Gentlemen on my right.
Hi, uh, my name is Daniel Burke, 23 Fairview Ave.
Get closer to the mic, please.
Can you hear me now?
Very good.
All right. So, um, I have some experience with, uh, building some things in town. I own a company here in town, and, uh, I built my home here in 2020, uh, 2020, and I'm glad I did because I wouldn't be able to buy it now. I hear a lot of rhetoric here about affordable housing, and, uh, my experience in the town is, I built an at-right building, allegedly at-right, and I was a year of zoning board, and I was denied by the Planning Board, even though I didn't ask for anything from the Planning Board. I've had a real negative experience with that, and maybe that's why I'm biased. If you own a single-family in Massachusetts right now, it is your right to build an ADU. Okay? There is such thing as an, you know, a must-issue. That's what this is. This is a by-right permit. Once you involve the Planning Board, it is not by right. This whole subjugation, calling it like, you know, preservation of character, it's just an infringement on what is right now currently your right. So like, it comes from a good place. It's like, we don't want ugly stuff built, people don't want short-term rentals, more congestion. Instead of having gentle density, which is what the ADU laws hope to encourage, what happens is they make it hard for reasonable development, and then we end up with the buildings that people complain about, 3A and towers. You're going to end up with five-story buildings. Like, that's just the way it goes if you don't increase the density gently. What I've seen here from Planning Board in the review is this elitist pull-up-the-ladder mentality. I got into town, no one else can get in. Pull up the ladder, I got mine. Like, what we're talking about here is, so if I have an existing home and I want to move my mother in to help watch the kids, I got to get a Planning Board review, I got to pay for a new water line, I got to convince them, they can tell me how to space the windows, where I got to put fencing. It's an incredible cost, and it's, like, look, there's no way in my life where I get to pick and choose what state laws I follow. So, there's the state law says you have a right to an ADU. Everything in addition to that by the town is there to block you from having an ADU. Like, what are we trying to prevent here? I've seen, so I have nine rental units in town, so I could be painted as like, whatever, you know, I'm invested in this issue. I don't have any ADUs, I'm not building an ADU, but I have like, an issue with living in a town. When I moved here, my taxes were 12 grand, they go up to 18 grand already this year. I'm not here to cry poor, but I'm not a senior citizen on a fixed income. And your neighbor who is a senior citizen, that wants to move somebody in to stay in the town they've been in a long time, they're going to have to beg the Planning Board, they're going to have to pay money and go through a review against state law.
Again, Mr. Burke, it is-
Oh, 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 no one's recognized yet. Are you done, Mr. Burke?
I think so.
Good. Now, Mrs. Labbert.
So, Mr. Burke, um, you will know that, um, under the new law, we do, a site plan review cannot be denied. That's what you need to know first of all. We cannot deny that under the new bylaw. Why we want a site plan review is to make sure that it is in keeping with the characteristic of the town and that your neighbors know what is going on next door to them, across the street, or in the next block. It is not onerous, we are watching out for the developments in the town.
Gentlemen in the middle. It's on the amendment now.
Could we, uh, call the question and vote on this?
I, I'm sorry, I, I-
I don't know if I'm allowed to go to the mic again. I think you're only allowed two times at the mic in the evening, but if, um, I could call the question and we could vote on this?
You can call the question. Do we have a second for calling the question? You have a second. This requires a two-thirds vote. This is calling the question on the amendment. This is just on the proposed amendment. All those in favor on ending debate on the proposed amendment, say aye. Those opposed, no. It passes by two-thirds. Debate is ended on the amendment. We will now call for a vote on the amendment. This requires a majority vote. All those in favor of amending the mo- the motion as in this amendment motion, say aye. Those opposed, no. The motion fails, and the amendment is not allowed. I think there's another amendment coming.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mary Ann Lewis, Lighthouse Road. I offer, uh, in the hands of the clerk, Amendment Number Two, which moves to amend Article 16 by striking Sections 530.2 subsection K and 530.1 subsection D in their, in their entirety.
Is there a second? Oh, motion to second it, could you, uh, just give us a quick description of what five thir-, those two sections are, please?
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Uh, this addresses the, uh, restriction of short-term rental to not less than 31 days that is in the proposed bylaw change by the Planning Department. So we heard a little bit from, um, the Planning Board earlier regarding the purpose of the Affordable Homes Act, that it was designed or intended for permanent housing. And again, I respectfully disagree. Our own purpose of accessory dwelling bylaw sections under Section 530 state in the first three sections, it is to provide an opportunity for homeowners who can no longer physically or financially maintain their principal dwelling, to remain in homes they might otherwise be forced to leave, B, to make housing units available to moderate-income households who might otherwise have difficulty finding homes within the town, and C, to provide a variety of types of housing to meet the needs of residents and workers. I suggest that this is another onerous and unnecessary restriction being placed discriminately, discriminately onto accessory dwelling units that- discriminately onto accessory dwelling units that does not apply to single-family homes. We, in many ways, even though, although certainly we are a year-round community, we see an increase in activity in the summertime. People like to come here, as I always say, I have a lot more friends between Memorial Day and Labor Day, uh, in Situate than I do the rest of the year. People come here to enjoy fishing chatters, our beautiful beaches, to enjoy our fine restaurants on Front Street. They come for Heritage Day celebrations, and we don't have any hotels in this town. None. We have one inn. I would suggest that by restricting short-term rentals, we are doing something that is not right for this community, that would support those businesses that are an economic engine to our town. So I would urge and encourage town meeting to support the amendment to strike the minimum requirement of 31 days for rentals. Thank you.
Planning board.
Again, Karen Joseph, Town Planner. The Affordable Homes Act was designed for permanent housing. The state law and its implementing regulations allow for a local choice on whether to have short-term rentals or not. Overwhelmingly, in the four sessions of the public hearing, most people said that they wanted short-term rentals restricted, so that's what the planning board has done. Many of the other towns who are dealing with this issue are restricting short-term rental of the ADU. It's just restricting the short-term rental of the ADU. It has nothing to do with the short-term rental of the principal dwelling. And again, the state law allows us to do it.
Thank you. Gentlemen in the middle aisle.
Mike Gibson, 142 Old Forge Road. Again, I'm on the Capitol Planning Committee, but I'm here in my individual capacity. Or Town Planner, Karen Joseph, just laid it out very eloquently. Uh, if you want to buy property here and rent out homes along the shore as an Airbnb, you can absolutely do that. This just restricts the ADUs. I would say the proponents of these amendments can't have it both ways. You can't say that the purpose of this law is for seniors or young people or those that just need somewhere to stay, that by restricting short-term rentals at all impacts them. You could have 30-day rentals, you could have month-to-month tenancy. You do anything like that, we're talking about Airbnb communities, I don't want to be one, I think many of you don't want to be one, that's not the town we live in, that's not the town we want to be. So I would encourage you to vote no to the amendment and accept what the planning board has artfully put together with this article. Thank you.
Thank you. Gentlemen on my left.
Scott Greenbaum, 40 Damon Road. I've stayed in a ton of Airbnbs. Most of them are not accessory dwellings. You don't get a private kitchen, you may even share a bathroom with the owner. So restricting the AD, the AD, the accessory dwellings to, from being short-term rentals is not a, not, shouldn't be an issue. The object of the, of a accessory dwelling is for permanent or semi-permanent, 31 days is not permanent rental. So I can't support this amendment, um, because the object is to build semi-permanent housing, not to build accessory units to use as weekend rentals.
Thank you. Gentlemen on my right.
Good evening. Thomas Storniou, 72 Gannon Road. I love the town of Situate, but there's no place to stay. That is something that my wife and I, small business owners in the harbor, along with a lot of other people, have heard through the years. I love Situate, but there's no way to get there and there's no other place to stay. So, short-term rentals are, are an easy fix. But even bigger than that, property owners and homeowners have demonstrated an incredible loyalty to the town of Situate. Such, such a loyalty that the finances, Article 4, and the finances of this meeting. I simply think the town of Situate should show a little bit of reciprocity to the homeowners and property owners by letting us do what we wish with our property. Kindly consider that and thank you for doing what you do.
Thank you. Further discussion? Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mary Ann Lewis, Lighthouse Road. Uh, I just want to clarify, uh, this is not an either-or situation. This is all types of housing, all different, uh, profiles to provide, under Section C, to provide a variety of types of housing. So yes, permanent, yes to seniors who want to downsize, yes to parents who want to help young adults, uh, get into affordable housing, and yes to short-term rentals and permanent housing. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? If being none, calls for vote on the amendment. Question is whether to add the amendment as proposed. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, no. The amendment fails. My genie tells me there's one more amendment coming.
Last but not least. This is a quick one, folks, I promise. Amendment number three would move to amend Article 16, Section 200 by striking the word "or" and inserting in its place "and" in the first sentence after preparation and before cooking, under the definitions. What this does, ladies and gentlemen, is it clarifies a definition that was added by the planning department to, uh, propose that what constitutes an ADU, in other words, what would allow them to have oversight, regulation, impose onerous restrictions, costly additions, would be something that had a refrigerator, a counter to prepare food, or a stove, meaning any one of those things. By adding "and," it would require that all of those would need to be present. And this would prevent those costly oversight procedures that would allow them to say that your she shed or your man garage or something that had a sink or a refrigerator constitutes a, an accessory dwelling and therefore allows them to regulate in a manner that would be unduly burdensome and costly. So I urge town meeting to adopt this, to limit the expansive suggested language that would allow them to get into someone who has a, a spare area with just a wet bar or a refrigerator. Thank you.
Is there a second? Did we get a second? All right. Okay, planning board.
We need a point of clarification. We need to know which "or" you want to, uh, change.
I may have a moment. And I believe this was actually discussed in front of the, um, Board of Selectmen when you presented it, and some language was deleted that would suggest that, but by leaving that "or" in there, it didn't accomplish what was intended. It's under the definitions of cooking and kitchen facility. About, uh, three paragraphs down, it would be the second "or." In fact, you have "and slash or" and you crossed out "and," I would suggest that you keep "and" and cross out "or." Page 82, under accessory use slash structure. And it may have, it may have been a typo because I know it was discussed in front, with the board.
The "and" is crossed out so that it reads "or," which is what the, uh, what's, what we discussed with the select board. And we took out the other language too that we discussed, that we discussed with the select board. We took out the "and."
Correct. I believe that's not consistent with what the intention was, which is "and" would make it necessary to have all those things present to be considered a, a kitchen or a cooking facility. "Or" would make it any one of those things. So if someone had just a wet bar, you could make them subject to all the regulations.
So first of all, the planning board doesn't drive around and look at people's sheds to see what they have in there. You would have to come in front of us and ask for a accessory dwelling. They're going to the building permit. Nobody is driving into people's homes, going in to see if they have a wet bar and a refrigerator in their living room and say, oh, that's a necessary dwelling. So I don't appreciate kind of indicating that the planning board would do that. We would definitely not do that. But we'll, we'll discuss the "and" or the "or" up here and see what we want to do. But you're following me? We're not driving into people's homes and looking at this stuff. You're coming before.
I'm suggesting that the "and" should replace the "or" because if it doesn't, any structure that has just a refrigerator or just a wet bar can be and would be considered an accessory dwelling unit as it is written.
I mean, so first of all, that's not the intent of the bylaw. The intent is it needs to have a stove, a food preparation area, and a sink so that it can be, it's an accessory dwelling unit. Accessory dwelling unit has to have sanitation, cooking, and habitation facilities. So that's why we put this definition, definition in there. The planning board put the definition in there because we were having a problem with ADUs. Basically, somebody could come in and do everything but a stove, take the stove, and then put the, put the wiring, put the plumbing in for stove, and then come back and call it, get an inspection, and then it's not an ADU, but then come back and put a stove in and it's an ADU. So that's why we put the definition in.
Respectfully, I agree with the first part of your statement, which is that if your intent was to have an "and," then that's exactly what the amendment does. It substitutes the "or," which would suggest any one of them constitutes, the presence of any one of them would constitute a dwelling, putting, replacing it with "and" would suggest that you need all of those components. I urge town meeting to adopt amendment three. Thank you.
And the planning board opposes that amendment, correct? You're, you're opposing the, that amendment?
I will speak on the part of the planning board, and as it is written, that is how we are interpreting it, given to us by town legal counsel.
Gentlemen on the left.
Move the question.
That's a good idea. Do I have a second? What was your, sir? We didn't get your name and address. No, you gotta come down.
Eric McCarthy, 27 Grove Street, and I figured out why attendance is so low. I'm called move the question.
That's, that's all. We just want to hear the motion. Thank you. Second of the motion. All those in favor of, of calling the question, ending discussion on the motion, say aye. Those opposed, no. All right, we're going to move to a vote on the amendment. All those in favor of amending the main motion as proposed, say aye. Those opposed, no. Those have it, the amendment does not pass. We go back now to the main motion, which is the passage of the ADU bylaw as proposed by the planning board. Is there discussion, any further discussion on that? Yes, sir.
Eric McCarthy, 27 Grove Street. I call to move the question.
There being no further discussion, we will move to a vote. This requires a majority vote. All those in favor of the ADU amendment as proposed by the planning board, say aye. The ayes have it, the motion is, uh, passed. We move now to Article 18, which is an amendment to the town's general bylaws having to deal with fair access to fish, fowl, and navigate. All, uh, for the selectmen.
I move that the town amend the general bylaws as printed in the warrant.
We have a second? Thank you. Go ahead.
This amendment was proposed by the Waterways Commission unanimously supported by the select board. The amendment is designed to strengthen the commitment to our town to support our local fishing industry. The amendment was modeled after other New England towns who have used bylaws to recognize the importance of commercial fishing industry in their coastal towns. As our town grows and the waterfront changes over time, it is important to continue to commit and be mindful of the importance of the commercial fishing industry in this town. The select board voted unanimously in favor.
Do we have advisory recommendation?
Um, although this is, amendment is, um, although this is an amendment to an existing bylaw, it's more of a statement to ensure that the history of fishing and its impact on Situate is more formally recognized. Fishing is a 365-day-a-year business, and there will be some side effects that may be unavoidable, and that is basically what this spells out.
Is there any discussion? If being none, we'll go to a vote. This requires a majority vote. All those in favor of the bylaw amendment, say aye. Those opposed? It's unanimous vote, motion passes. Move now to Article 19, amending the general bylaws for the registration and maintenance of abandoned and vacant buildings. And while we're on these bylaws, I just want you to note that the bylaw committee has reviewed these and has recommended them to the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town amend the general bylaws as shown in the printed warrant.
Thank you. We have a second? Have a second? Want to speak quick, please?
Uh, as, as we've, we've said a lot tonight, this town is a beautiful community. Uh, but over the years, we've had situations where properties have been abandoned by their owners and to nature, resulting in unsightly and sometimes dangerous conditions. On my own street, there is a building that by the grace of God, it hasn't been blown into the, all the houses around it. You know which one I'm talking about. Many times, the property owners continue to pay the taxes so the town cannot pursue a means of taking to address a problem. And what happens is sometimes an owner passes away and leaves the property to an estate, and it's very difficult to identify a responsible party from whom to seek improvements to the properties. This proposed article would amend the general bylaws and define an abandoned vacant building of more than six months and in physical disrepair, and require registration of known vacancies with the town so that we can identify a responsible party to address these issues. It also spells out what is required to ma, maintain a safe structure. And finally, it allows for monetary penalties for non-compliance with the bylaws. This article gives the town the means to address the situation that currently doesn't exist. The select board reviewed it and voted 5-0 in support of the article.
Thank you. Report from advisory. Ms. Ferguson?
The purpose is to protect the safety of our residents, but also protect property values and the end.
but also protect property values and the integrity of our town. This bylaw applies to residential properties only that are unoccupied for at least 185 days and show visible signs of distress. It gives the town the ability to enforce maintenance requirements, registration of property, and an enforcement mechanism, including the ability to immediately act if the property is deemed unsafe. It does not affect residential properties that are vacant but are well-maintained. We voted unanimously.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on the bylaw amendment? There being none, go to a vote. It's a majority vote. All those in favor of the amendment, say aye. Those opposed, no. It's a unanimous vote. The motion passes. Next is Article 21, Special Legislation for Parking Fines.
I move that the town authorize the select board to petition the General Court as set forth in the printed warrant, provided that the General Court may reasonably vary the form and substance of the requested legislation with the scope of the general public objectives of said petition.
Second. Have a second?
Second. All right. Now, what does that mean? This is regarding parking fines. In 1991, milk costs $1.39 per half gallon, and gas was $1.14 a gallon. 1991 was also the year that our beach parking fine was increased to $50. The select board received complaints from residents regarding parking fees and enforcement in Minnit as well as Peggotty Beach. The current fine of $50 served as a deterrent in 1991, but is currently not served as a deterrent to people who do not have a beach sticker. In order to mitigate this issue, we proposed requesting a modification of the special act of 1991 to give the authority to the town to modify the fine from $50 to $100. The select board voted 5-0 in favor.
Advisory Committee report. Mr. Kelly.
Thank you for sticking around. This is the penultimate question. We, the advisory board, supports unanimously the proposal to increase fines from $50 to $100. It's an easy way for neighboring fines to avoid beach stickers. And we encourage everybody to pass this.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? There being none, we move to a vote. Majority vote. Yes, ma'am.
Ellen Schloss, 50 Manlot Road. I don't know. To me, $100 seems pretty excessive. I also just want to say, and this is maybe not the right time to bring it up, but I just think we have, the fact that we're not allowed to park at the beaches after 9 o'clock. I mean, you know, why can't somebody who lives in the town and has a beach sticker walk on the beach in the moonlight at 9:30? I don't know. I just have a problem with that.
I guess that's a rhetorical question. No one wants to respond to that? We'll go to the lady on my left again.
Hi, Caroline Mian, 61 Cedarwood Road. I actually disagree with the fine of $100 being hefty. I feel like if we had adequate beach parking at all of our beaches that could serve all of the residents who wanted to park there, I would say $100 seems reasonable. But if we're truly trying to deter people from parking at a beach like Minnit, where very frequently you can go, turn around, see many cars with tickets, many non-resident cars parked there, I think we should increase it to like $150. I don't know what the right way to say amend.
Do you want to amend it?
I know there's a formal way to do this.
Are you asking to amend it to $150?
I'm asking to amend it to $150.
We have a second for a motion to amend to $150. Okay. Any discussion on the amendment? Motion to amend is to increase the requested amount of legislature from $100 to $150. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, no. I think the ayes have it. We move now the vote on the main motion, which as it has been amended, is for $150 fines. Yes, sir.
Peter Terode, Number 4 Gannon Road. If you can picture where that is, you've been to the beach. The lots are supposed to close at 9:30. They never do. And you can imagine what goes on there on a hot summer night. I'm not working anymore, but I used to be working for a couple of years ago. And we deserve to have a little bit of peace. I'm not going to even talk about the taxes and what that has to do with it. But this is about being social and being human. I'm tired of hearing beep, 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 locking the doors, slamming the doors, everything. So I would say, let's close the beach at 9:30 like it's supposed to be closed. And also, if somebody needs to be towed, they should be towed, and not just a fine. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the $150 fine? There being none. All those in favor of the motion as amended, please say aye. Those opposed, no. I think the ayes have it. Seven people want to vote at this hour? We will. Okay, the ayes have it. It's a majority vote. Getting to the last article, I just want to say, we better recognize Kathy Gardner. These meetings happen because of her and her staff. She hands me a book and I read it. It's real easy. All right. We come to Article 21, which is for 22, which is Special Legislation for Sidewalk Betterments.
I move that the town authorize the select board to petition the General Court as set forth in the printed warrant, provided that the General Court may reasonably vary the form and substance of the required legislation with the scope of the general public objectives of said petition.
We have a second. We have a second. Second it? Go ahead, Andrew.
So to explain this, we actually had a group of residents who wanted to give us money for a sidewalk, and we needed a vehicle to do that. We did not have that vehicle. If you'd like to give us some money, this would now give us that opportunity. This is a voluntary program. We're not forcing anyone to do that. But if you want to come together as a group and have a betterment for a sidewalk, it gives that option for us to move forward.
Recommendation from advisory.
The advisory committee voted unanimously on this one to increase the percentage of assessment from 50% to 100%, allowing abutters to build their own sidewalks.
Thank you. Any further discussion? There being none, we'll go to a vote on...
Ben Bornstein, 99 First Parish Road. Just to clarify, this would not require property owners abutting sidewalks to pay a full cost of repair or reconstruction of a sidewalk. It's a little bit unclear from the language.
No. It will not require that.
One more question. Would the sidewalk still be considered town infrastructure and be town-owned? Should this group of citizens pay the full cost of the sidewalk? The infrastructure being the sidewalk would still be town-owned?
Right. So actually, state law, the most, anyway, is actually only 50%. So at the most, that someone could give to the town would be 50% for the full.
But this is to allow for the full cost, correct? You're changing it from 50%.
Right. So the understanding is, is that we're going to go from that 50, right? Up to 100%. Correct. So as of right now, the most you could do, but we still don't even have that in our bylaws structured properly. So this would put us into compliance and allow us to go to that 100. If so, someone chooses. Again, voluntary program if those folks wanted to come forward.
All I'm getting at is, would, in the event that the sidewalk reconstruction or new sidewalk was, the cost was paid by private citizens, where would liability fall in the event that there was an injury or some other accident to occur on this sidewalk?
Yeah, so liability is still with the town.
That was my only question.
Anyone else want to slip in? Last chance. Okay, we're going to move to a vote. All those in favor of the Special Legislation on Sidewalk Betterments, say aye. Those opposed, no. It's a majority vote, and the motion passes by a majority. Thank you all for coming. The meeting is dissolved.